Welcome to the February 27 City Council meeting. If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of Georgia, to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Rouse is absent.
And Madam Clerk, if you'd read Item 1. I'll join you.
Item 1, Peace Corps Week, February 25 through March 2, 2024.
One of our own gets to join us, so... Welcome, all of you. Whereas, the Peace Corps was established by President John F. Kennedy on March 1, 1961, to promote world peace and friendship by fulfilling three goals. One, to help the people of interested countries in meeting their need for trained men and women; two, to help promote a better understanding of Americans on the part of the people served; and three, to help promote a better understanding of other peoples on part of the Americans. And whereas, the Peace Corps partners with communities abroad to develop sustainable solutions for the world's most pressing challenges, and its volunteers carry out people-to-people public service and citizen diplomacy at the grassroots level, addressing challenges in agriculture, community economic development, education, environment, health, and youth development across the globe. And, whereas, Peace Corps volunteers return home as global citizens with unique cross-cultural perspectives, as well as leadership, language, teaching, and community development skills that provide value in today's global economy. And whereas, today, sixty-three years after its founding, with over 240,000 Americans having served as Peace Corps volunteers in 142 countries, the Peace Corps remains committed to its ideals, and its volunteers leave a legacy on the lives and communities of the people they reach, educate, and inspire. And, whereas, the University of California, Santa Barbara, has a long and rich history of producing Peace Corps volunteers, and Santa Barbara County has a strong presence of returned Peace Corps volunteers and an active local Peace Corps Association. And, whereas, Peace Corps Week is an annual event commemorating the establishment of the Peace Corps on March 1, 1961, celebrating all the ways that Peace Corps makes a difference at home and abroad while renewing the agency's commitment to service. Now, therefore, I, speaking for Randy Rouse, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim February 25 to March 2, 2024, as Peace Corps Week, commending the Santa Barbara Peace Corps Association, the L.A. Regional Peace Corps Office, and local returned Peace Corps volunteers for advancing the Peace Corps mission locally in Santa Barbara. So, one of the longest ones I've seen. So...
Well, we do have a long...
Please offer some words on that first.
Thank you. I'm Naomi Kovacs, and I want to thank council for this recognition of the importance of Peace Corps, both for its incredible sixty-three-year legacy and for its value in our world now and going forward. You might be surprised to see me standing on this side of the speaker's podium instead of being in my role as deputy city clerk for our wonderful city, but I am also a proud returned Peace Corps volunteer who served in Cameroon, Africa, and I'm also a board member of the local Santa Barbara Peace Corps Association. Looking at today's agenda, members of the public might have thought it very odd for you to declare a Peace Corps Week in Santa Barbara, but your proclamation has really explained why, and we have a very strong local returned Peace Corps Volunteer Association here in Santa Barbara. And in fact, UCSB has consistently and historically been one of the top Peace Corps volunteer-producing universities in the entire country. Here with me today to accept this proclamation are just a handful of other locals who have proudly served in the Peace Corps. I just want them to say who they are real quick and where they served.
I'm Millie Brother. I was in the West Indies.
I'm Rose Wills. I actually served twice India, in Madhya Pradesh, and also in Mansurat, when the island, when a volcano exploded on the island and destroyed two-thirds of it.
Hi there. I'm Michael Marzola. I served in Guatemala and Central America, as well as a few other Central American countries, for four years as a volunteer, and then I went on to become a recruiter and a trainer.
So, on behalf of those of us here and our entire local community of Peace Corps volunteers, we want to thank you for this recognition and want to encourage anyone here today or listening from home to reach out to us. Just look us up, Google us, Santa Barbara Peace Corps Association. If you're interested in maybe serving in the Peace Corps, or you did and you'd like to connect with other locals, we would love to hear from you. And again, thank you for this declaration.
Madam City Administrator, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. We would like to pull item, consent item number four from the agenda to be heard at a later date. Thank you.
Okay. Will we make the adjustment now in number six, or we want to do that later?
We can do that later when we get to the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, you probably have some items to read through.
I do. Item 2, amend street improvement and permitting requirements, ordinance adoption. Recommendation, council adopt by reading of title only, and ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by amending Chapter 22.44 relating to street dedication and improvement requirements, Chapter 22.60 relating to permits for work on the street and sidewalks, Chapter 22.32 relating to building numbering, Chapter 22.64.010 relating to gates adjacent to streets or sidewalks, Section 28.08.010 relating to subdivision requirements for streets and sidewalks, Section 10.56.010 relating to obstruction of sidewalks, and by the addition of Chapter 22.46 relating to acquisition of property for public improvements. Item 4, lease agreement, I'm sorry, item 4 we are pulling. Item 5, corrected headers in Table 30.20.030B and corrected section number 30.25.030 in Title 30 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code pertaining to the Average Unit Size Density Incentive Program Ordinance Introduction. Recommendation, the council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, and ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code to correct clerical errors in the headers in Table 30.20.030B and Section Number 30.25.030 pertaining to the Average Unit Size Density Incentive Program. Item 6, rescission of the prohibition of natural gas in new construction. Ordinance introduction. Recommendation, the council, A, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, and ordinance, the council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by repealing Chapter 22.120 prohibiting natural gas infrastructure in new buildings. And that's all the items to read on consent.
Thank you. Does anybody up here need to poll anything or comment on any item? Okay.
Mayor Protem Jordan, could I request that we poll Item 6, and I'll address that, why we need a separate vote on that matter.
I want to go to the polled items.
Yes.
Okay. I will just let you all know, I think you all know, that we're going to treat Item 11 a little different today because we have an introduction to make as part of that item. So, I'm going to start down there, and if you would all just get ready to come down and join me with a photo, we can just kind of mayhem our way through this. It's a pretty special moment today, or the start to a special moment that will really occur in three months, and that's, we're adopting the new city administrator's contract today, and that is Kelly McAdoo, who's standing here right, right to my right, who's coming from the City of Hayward. She'll be joining us permanently sometime in May, and has graciously agreed to come to fly in and out of town today to meet with some of the staff and to be available to introduce herself publicly today. So, before we do that, I'm going to ask her to join us and counsel, scoot on in here, and we'll just take a welcome picture, and so...
Smile. That's good.
Good. Okay. Thank you. So, just a couple personal stories to welcome her. The staff and, executive staff and council had the opportunity for a workshop or a retreat last Thursday. Many of our executive team and department heads are here in the room today, and we did the obligatory yellow stickies on the wall on a, on a variety of subjects, and one of them was successes in the most recent past, so let's say in the last year. And to, to the credit of who are welcoming today, every council member behind me, plus the one that's missing, included a yellow sticky on the hiring of our next city administrator. Share one more quick anecdotal story, and that was, somebody sitting behind me had occasion to be at a dinner this weekend for League of California Cities, and he was approached multiple times by our peers and other executive team members in the region congratulating us on a great catch for our next city administrator. So, not only for the City of Santa Barbara, but also regionally for the central coast, for the role she'll play working with the other cities and counties in this particular area. So, I'd like to introduce Kelly, Kelly McAdoo, who will be here in May as our next city administrator.
This feels a little awkward, so I'm going to sort of talk to both sides of the room. I just want to thank Vice Mayor Jordan, the council, Mayor Rouse, who's obviously not here today. It is an absolute pleasure to be able to join the City of Santa Barbara. I did prepare a twenty-minute PowerPoint presentation on my life history for everyone. I was instructed to, I'm just joking. Anyway, I look forward to joining the community. I will be up and down a few times before I start in May, trying to relocate and find a place to live, and just meeting with council members and starting to meet with community members, and I just really look forward to being a part of this community and this region, and look forward to working with everyone. So, thank you all very much.
Any comments from up here? Anything? No? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then, so I'll be looking for a motion in a second for the consent items, less, number four and number six, please.
So moved. Second.
Do you have that, Madam Clerk? Okay. Fill us up. That'll be great.
You bet. So, this is a motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez, for all items on the consent calendar except for Items 4 and Item 6. Go ahead and vote, please.
I think we're missing some voting screens.
Let's see. Councilmember Harmon and Councilmembers Gutierrez and Friedman, are you seeing a screen?
Neither am I.
All right. I'm on. Mayor and council, Mayor Protem and council, are you seeing voting screens in front of you?
I think several of us.
Some, okay. Let's just do a roll call vote for this.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Aye.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
And Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Yes.
Good to go? Okay. And a report from the Finance Committee, please.
We had a presentation on the water and wastewater rate study revenue requirements, and we will be discussing, we're, we're going to have the same presentation for council today. The committee agreed on option number two, and there was also a request for an analysis to reduce our reserves to help mediate the raise of the cost of water and wastewater.
Thanks. And we'll go to public comment for items not on the agenda. I have a couple, three speaker slips here, so, Madam Clerk, if you'd just set us up for three minutes, and then if you're here to speak on something that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to fill out a speaker slip at the back and get it up here in the next couple of minutes. And then, Madam Clerk, if you'd just, a couple more minutes, watch who's online, if anybody, for hands up, and we'll cut it off at that point. So, first up at the podium, Mr. Rick Hanson.
Mayor Protem and the city council. Many landlords in Santa Barbara operate their enterprise as a business. There are significant tax advantages for doing so. All the expenses involved in renting and maintaining their property, including the property tax they pay on that property, are therefore business expenses. The home in which the landlord lives and may pay its mortgage also has living and maintenance expenses and property taxes, but these are personal housing expenses. Business expenses and personal housing expenses are obviously not the same. Property tax is 0.51% in Santa Barbara and increases less than 2% per year. So, if the property owner, buyer, has a fixed-rate mortgage, these personal housing expenses and how much they can be increased yearly are thus limited. Unfortunately, this is not the case for renters in Santa Barbara. The rent portion of their personal housing expenses can be legally increased up to 10% a year. The disparity between the protection afforded for those paying a mortgage and those paying rent is inescapable. Why should renters be treated this way? You have had many people from the community come before you to speak about the problem of skyrocketing rents in Santa Barbara. Have you been listening? Some of you have. Unfortunately, some of you have not. Without the protection of a 2% rent cap, like the cap the landlord likely enjoys on their own home, the right to return for the tenant is meaningless, and more and more worthy people are forced to leave their rental environment here in Santa Barbara, which is quite toxic. Many mom-and-pop landlords in Santa Barbara are worried that the new regulations protect, that protect the rights and welfare of tenants may be difficult to comply with and cause unwanted expenses. Some are discouraged and consider selling their property. There's a real danger that these properties could be bought up by corporations with few or no ties to the community. The solution for this is for the city to help mom-and-pop landlords to afford to be small business people. How can this be accomplished? Needs inquiry and discussion, but ways to help small business landlords in Santa Barbara can be found if the city will commit to doing so. Both tenants and honest landlords in Santa Barbara need to be encouraged and protected. This is your job. To refuse to act on the rent cap problem is beyond despicable. All of the recent changes in the ordinance regarding tenants' rights were sorely needed, but without a rent cap, these rights and the tenants they were designed to protect are undercut and unsupported. The issue may seem complicated, but the solution is clear. Put a sensible rent cap in place and commit to find ways to encourage small, local business landlords to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bob Ludwig.
Mayor Protem Jordan and members of the council. Bob Ludwig, first time I appeared at this podium was in 1977 and pretty much continuously for forty-seven years. One time I appeared here in a rain slicker with a video that was able to be presented, and that was in 2003. We had just survived that morning in Santa Barbara about a four-inch downpour, and a building I owned on Milpus Street lost a section of its roof and almost the entire building because the drain for the rain on the roof was plugged by the ficus tree out in front of that building. And I came and I had a plea, and I said, here's the video evidence of the collapsed lateral, and would you please help me? I need to remove that tree, which was a rarity to remove a ficus tree in 2003. I had the permit later that day, and it was removed, and I saved what was left of that building. As the president then of the Milpus Association, I then did a hand, a door-by-door study of all of those trees, and I decided that we needed to do something as a community, as beautiful as that tree canopy of Milpus is with the ficus. Those trees also appeared on Upper State Street, and they do still appear in various places downtown. And I made a presentation at this podium with a PowerPoint, not quite twenty minutes, but it was, and I called it "The Beauty Above, the Death Below." It was overly dramatic. The point was that many buildings and most of the infrastructure of Milpus Street was at great risk. Our sidewalks were the least walkable, most narrow, most impacted, highest maintenance cost, that was all anecdotally my decision, and I pleaded with the council at the time to undertake both a study and a plan for changing the streetscape of Milpus. I still operate some property on Milpus Street. I hope to develop that for housing for this community, but I still have a heart for all of the other properties along Milpus, from the beach to the bowl. Those seventeen blocks are, I think, one, if not the most important neighborhood that I can imagine, that serves only and mostly residents, and it desperately needs your leadership, desperately, and I thank you for applying that.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anthony Del Bello.
I'll hail to the Mayor Protem and city council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here this morning or this afternoon. You know, I didn't know Bob was going to talk about Milpus Street. Well, I was born at 135 North Milpus Street, when Milpus Street was the 101 freeway to, up to Gutierrez Street. Gutierrez is named after Alejandro Gutierrez and Oscar Gutierrez. No, that's a joke. Anyway, I have here, ninety-two years ago, my parents bought that property, and it's been in the Del Bello family since then. The taxes at that time were $79.95. That's ninety-two years ago. Today, they're over $7,500 a year. Milpus Street was a two-year, a two-lane highway up to Gutierrez when my parents bought the house. In the 1950s, the property owners gave ten feet of their frontage to expand Milpus Street to four lanes, two going up and two going down, plus parking. What did we get in return for that? We got ficus trees planted on Milpus Street. Now, I didn't know he was here today to talk about them. You people, you have the strength to implement the cutting of those trees, or at least cutting the canopy back. We have a perfect ceiling on our property, and as Bob told you, the leaves from those trees, ficus trees, fill up our drains. Luckily, I didn't have the problem that Bob had, but it could happen. Those trees, you need to come down there. Alejandro came, I asked her to come down two weeks ago because she's a councilwoman from that area. She came, and I gave her, she saw the pictures. The canopy is going forty feet over our property, over the ceiling. I need your help, city council members, because I've asked the city to take care of it, and they say they have no money in the budget. So, I have seven things that I'm asking you to do today.
Mr. Del Bello, your, your time is up, unfortunately. If you could put those in writing and give them to a staff member, a city clerk, or a city administrator, they can put those, get those seven things in front of us.
Oh, fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adiós.
Madam Clerk, any online public comment today?
No, Mr. Mayor Protem.
None?
No, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Okay. Ms. Ostranger, you're back to Item 6 for us?
Yes. Thank you. Mayor Protem Jordan and council members, there is a typo in the title of the ordinance. There's a reference, as you'll see in the staff recommendation, to Chapter 22.120. It should be Chapter 22.110, so I would just advise that the council move staff recommendation with the change, correcting that to Chapter 22.110.
Okay. If there's no questions inside, look for that motion in a second.
So, the revised title, the subject is "A Recision of the Prohibition of Natural Gas in New Construction Ordinance Introduction and Its Recommendation, the Council Introduce and Subsequently Adopt by Reading of Title Only, and Ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara Amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by Repealing Chapter 22.110 prohibiting natural gas infrastructure in new buildings."
So, we have a motion from Mr. Friedman. Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
From Alejandro Gutierrez? Okay. So, the proper time, the proper time to comment on this would have been during the consent items, so, okay. So, if you'd cue us up for a vote, please.
Very good. We'll, we'll do a...
Okay. I'm sorry. Councilmember Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a quick comment that it is with... Just a quick comment that it is with regret on that this needs to be rescinded. I just want it to be clear that this isn't because, I'll speak for myself, it isn't because I think this is a bad idea, it's because it has been found legally that we can't do this at this time, but it is with very much regret to rescind this.
No further comments? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Very good. And we'll do another roll call vote here. So this is a motion by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez. Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Aye.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez.
Yes.
And Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
And Mayor Rouse absent. Passed unanimously with Mayor Rouse absent.
Thank you. And as soon as you're ready, you would lead us into item 13, please.
Item 13, Water and Wastewater Rate Studies Revenue Requirements.
Mr. Hagmark. Oh, did I skip Council and Subcommittee? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped Council and Subcommittee reports. So, sorry, Josh. I am not seeing those, if you're pushing your button either. So, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. At Water Commission, we heard these same water and wastewater rate study that we're hearing today. At CCRB, enclosed session report out that we directed legal counsel to file a closing brief in solving matter. At COME, we approved the infrastructure improvement plan. It's a five-year plan, and they extended the declaration of local emergency. And the infrastructure plan is $8 million plan over, over five years. And then what we learned also at that meeting is that the last two years have been historic wet years since the time that the dam was constructed. So we went from historic drought to the last two years being the historic wettest period. In SSAC, State Advisory Committee, we've been meeting with multiple small groups, and that's all for now.
Is there any others? Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The sister cities committees met quite a bit in the last few weeks. They celebrated the Chinese New Year. They went over plans to travel to meet a Flores Peru. They celebrated the anniversary of our Japanese sister city, and they also went over plans to hold a art, a youth art event to raise money for sister cities. And went to an arts advisory meeting to go over potential funding for art projects, attended or watched a fire and police commission meeting that was really, really insightful about the process of how you go about terminating a police officer employment with the city. That was really educational and insightful. So if you all have the time, you should go back and watch that. And I believe that is it. Thanks.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. I attended the monthly Legal Cities, Coastal Cities group, and then also the Library Advisory Board. And of interest, there was a lot of discussion about the budget, and one of the challenges is that if you have, anybody can have a library card and access our digital budget, and so the digital collection is very expensive to maintain, and we have a lot of non-city users, and it's affecting our collections budget. And by that, it's other users from, say, City Galita, Carpinteria, others within the county. And so it's an ongoing discussion that we're going to be implementing within the county on how other communities can increase their digital collections, because what's happening is if they're not maintaining them properly, it's affecting us. And an example is our hoopla that we have a subscription to. We only are allowed a certain amount per, of dollars per month, and we have never hit that limit, and you're charged per use, per user. And in January, we hit that limit, so we could no longer use hoopla for a good portion of January. And so that's a discussion on level of service that other, we're going to start looking at with the other cities and the county on how to address digital collections, because it seems we're bearing the brunt of that in our city.
Okay, and I don't see anybody else, so, thank you. Mr. Hagmark. Sorry for that false start.
Not a problem. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem Jordan, council members. Joshua Hagmark, I'm the Water Resources Manager, and here today for a very difficult conversation. I think we have done our due diligence to manage our utility, manage it well, and unfortunately, we find ourselves here facing some very difficult rate increases to be able to continue to provide service. We've had unprecedented cost increases. You've all experienced it in your own personal lives, I'm sure as well, seeing increases in electrical, chemicals, construction, materials, equipment, and it has really challenged our, our utility's ability to provide service. You know, our rates, we are a nonprofit. This isn't an organization that sends home profits or has shareholders, so our rates reflect the cost of providing service. And to put that in context, we provide about 2,000 pounds of water to every household every day. So there's a lot of water moving around underneath this, this community, and with that, we treat about 6 million gallons a day of wastewater and safely release that into the ocean. That all comes at a cost, and we've certainly seen the recent inflation eat away at that. And so with today's presentation, we hope to walk you through the challenges that we're facing and hopefully get some direction on how to move forward with setting our rates, because this is the first of many conversations. We've actually had several conversations with Water Commission on this, and most recently with Finance Committee just a few hours ago. So with that, I want to turn the conversation over to Ms. Cook, who is our Water Resources' Financial Officer.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem Jordan and council members. My name is Gabrielle Cook, and I am the Water Resources Financial Officer. So today, we will be presenting the revenue requirement, which is the first major analysis and first major step in the water and wastewater rate studies. And we are going to be looking for recommendations, as Mr. Hagmark alluded to, for council to direct staff to move forward with the next phase of the rate studies, which is the, to complete a cost of service analysis and rate design, and then we would return back to council with our rate notice. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Sean Corn, our esteemed rate consultant from HDR, to get into the nitty-gritty of the rates.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Ms. Cook, Mr. Hagmark. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As they have mentioned, we'll talk a little bit about the overall process of establishing cost-based and proportional water and wastewater rates. We'll talk through the status update of the rate studies and then dive into those revenue requirement recommendations and discussions, and really looking at the overall impact of operating capital cost increases to each of the utilities. At the end of this, we have a handful of slides on the next steps, which includes our cost of service analysis, the key drivers, and a little bit on the rate design or rate structure component as we move forward. And then we'll finish up with the next steps and schedules. As we go into a rate study, we think about what are our goals? What is the purpose of this? And as we establish this study, one of the first goals was to come back and establish a level of revenue for each utility that's sufficient over the long term to maintain and operate those utilities. Another important and key element of a rate study is to meet the Proposition 218 requirements of developing cost-based and proportional rates. So we have some legal requirements that we have to meet as we go through this process that are laid out in Proposition 218 for each of these. As we go through the analysis, we also need to think about some of the prudent financial planning criteria. So as we develop our financial projections going forward, we want to make sure that we're maintaining adequate debt service coverage ratios. So each utility has existing outstanding debt that has been used to fund prior capital improvements or the infrastructure that's there to serve customers, water and wastewater. And we have some requirements to maintain the revenues to support those. We also want to make sure that we're reinvesting in the systems at an adequate basis, so the annual renewal and replacement type projects that happen each year to maintain that level of service, as well as maintaining the council policy minimum reserve targets. And you heard earlier from the Finance Committee what that recommendation was to evaluate that a little bit more, so we'll touch on that as we go through this and talk a little bit more about that. Ultimately, we develop the rate studies for each utility on a standalone basis using generally accepted principles and methodologies. Those are outlined in our industry manuals, but these are specific to the city. This is based on your water and wastewater customer and system characteristics, so we develop those rates appropriately. As we go through a study, it is a three-step process. The first is the revenue requirement analysis. That is the focus of our discussion today. The next is the cost of service to determine the proportionality between rates for our different customer classes of service, residential, commercial, multifamily, industrial, and so on. And then once we know the results of that analysis, we can design rates that reflect our cost of service and overall revenue needs. The revenue requirement for today's discussion is really looking at what is that overall system revenue adjustment? So what's the total revenue needs for each of the utilities on a standalone basis? An update of where we are on the study. We have presented the results to the Water Commission at two times. We met with them actually earlier at the end of last year to talk about the overall approach, but we met with them in January and earlier this month to walk through the preliminary results and then the updated results of the revenue requirement analysis. As part of that discussion, we had recommendations, myself and staff, as far as what that recommendation, what that option would be to move forward, and the Water Commission was in agreement with our recommendation, but I will say had many questions and asked, asked many hard questions and also provided us some direction to go back and dig into a couple of items. What you all are seeing today is updated based on those discussions or those questions from the Water Commission, based on our projections of O and M costs as well as the capital plan that we had in those initial meetings. As a point of reference, the results that we're looking at today for the options, Option Two is what we will be focusing on, these are reduced increases compared to what the Water Commission has seen, and that has come through discussion internally with staff, working through projections of O and M, prioritizing capital projects, and looking at what the impacts to the overall rates were as we go through this. So staff has worked hard to evaluate what those needs are going forward to support both of these utilities. Couple of the key drivers here, one of the big drivers was the inflation rate that we've seen over the last three or four years, and more than what was anticipated in the prior water and wastewater rate studies. The water rate study was completed before we went into the pandemic, and as we all know, inflation rates soared during that pandemic and really outstripped the projections we had. The wastewater study was completed during the pandemic, and unfortunately, inflation continued and was higher than the projections we had as, as those studies were being completed. So that has a key impact on our overall O and M projection, so the annual cost of operating and maintaining each of the utilities, as well as the capital cost, that cost of construction to build and upgrade the facilities that you have in place to continue to provide service to your customers. Another impact we saw over the calendar year 2023 on the water side was given the above-average wet winter, we had lower sales or use of water, and that reduced the overall revenue by about 6 million, which was about 10% of the total revenue of the water utility. At this point, it may be, and that's compared to our budgeted and forecasted amounts, and we could see a similar reduction in this calendar year 2024. Now, having said that, for our rate study projections, we are basing that on the consumption we've seen over the last 12 to 18 months. So we are starting with this lower level of consumption to reflect what our new use is as we go forward from your customers. The challenge with this is that the majority of the costs for the water utility and the wastewater utility are fixed. Approximately 85% of those costs are incurred regardless of if you sell a drop of water to your constituents or treat a drop of water at the wastewater treatment plant. And so our costs don't go down when our usage goes down as part of that. So part of this rate study is also taking a look at that and seeing if there is a balance between there. As enterprise funds, the water and wastewater funds are primarily funded through the rate revenues that are received through the rates that we developed through this rate study process. There are not other funds coming from the city's general fund to the water wastewater utilities to fund those projects. This is almost entirely funded through the rates that are charged to the customers. And so that is an important component of this discussion and why, when we all went back after talking to the Water Commission of adjusting our projections going forward for operating and capital, to try and minimize those impacts. As I've mentioned, the rate-setting process is established by state law. It's noted as Proposition 218. It's included in the California Constitution. Ultimately, we have to go through this sequential rate study process to establish our rates to meet those requirements. I'll kick it off with the wastewater revenue requirement. We developed two options for consideration. These were walked through and examined with the Water Commission. Option one is our planned capital. This was the plan that was in place in the current time period that was looked at going forward from a capital planning purpose. These are the projects we need to complete over the next several years to maintain the wastewater utility. Option two was a revised capital plan, and that revision was the deferral or the shifting of capacity-related projects out into future years, so outside of our four-year rate-setting window, so 2029, fiscal year 2029 and on as part of that. As we walk through this process with the Water Commission and internally staff as they work through this, at this point, our recommendation is Option Two, which is that revised capital plan, as for a couple of reasons. One, it's consideration of ongoing capital projects and staff considerations, the ability to manage some of these bigger projects as they're ongoing. We have the El Estero Electrical Project going on right now. We have the Braemar Lift Station going on right now, so some very large projects that staff has to consider, as well as on the capacity-related projects, updating the wastewater model to accommodate impacts of new state housing requirements. So as there's more urbanization or densification of the city, then that has impacts on the wastewater utility's ability to provide service and transmit that wastewater to the El Estero Treatment Plant. And so that's part of this, is being able to reevaluate and update that to move forward. Now, as we've gone through this, here is the prior presentation, results that we presented in January to the Water Commission. That initial analysis, which was Option One, the full capital plan, was 17% for two consecutive fiscal years, followed by 12 and 1/2% and 12%. And you can see those initial monthly bill impacts. This is for an average customer going forward, and again, prior to cost of service, but ultimately the average increase that customers would see of $10 to $12 per month, per year. Now, as I mentioned, I worked with staff. Staff worked internally to walk through this process, worked with finance, the finance department to look at what those budget projections were going to be, what were those trends that they were seeing in the costs going forward, and then really did a deep dive into the capital needs and what could be accomplished and met over this four-year period.
So one of the biggest challenges here that at least the Water Commission and staff were struggling with is the, the level of capital funding. And as a reminder, we spent almost 10 years in a consent decree as a result of an inadequate amount of spending going into our collection system. And happy to report, we are in a much better place, and our collection system has vastly improved, and our spills have dramatically dropped. But that needs to continue, and the budget that we're putting forward, the recommendation is to continue funding that key critical infrastructure so that we do not find ourselves in another consent decree. And then the other image there is just the electrical project. You guys have heard a lot about the El Estero Electrical Project. Just want to hit on that again. We have a 50-plus-year-old electrical system at El Estero. We currently buy parts off of eBay to keep it going, and we are excited to get this project underway. But it also was a project that was forecasted, and we did our first rate study at a $23 million. Bids came in at $34 million, and, and that's in dispute right now, and we're working through those issues, but costs have just dramatically gone up. We cannot defer that project. It is a state revolving fund loan project, so it does have a low-interest loan to go with it, and we will be paying it over a 30-year period to try and diffuse those costs. But it is a central project that needs to be going, and it is part of the option that we are recommending.
So those are two of the projects. So those are two of the projects in our overall capital improvement plan. This slide gives you an example of what those annual cap, total annual capital projects are. You can see going across the screen here, we have start with fiscal year 2024 out through fiscal year 2033. The top of each of the bars are the total capital need in that year. We have a couple of different colors here. The bottom part of this is our rate-funded capital. That's the black or gray bar on the bottom. That is ultimately the amount of annual reinvestment in the system to keep continuing to improve that over time. The blue or the second or middle bar is our reserve funding. So we're using some reserves in some of these years to fund these projects. And then the green or the top part of the bar is our debt-funded component. Now, we just mentioned the El Estero Electrical Project. I've talked about the Braemar Lift Station. The green in these initial three years are those projects. This is the amount that are being debt-financed for those two large projects. And then we have some other smaller projects out in the future that would be funded with some similar low-interest term debt if those are available at that time. But ultimately, the overall goal here, as we look at that, is trying to levelize our annual debt service payments. So this chart provides you with an example of what our current or existing debt is as well as our future debt. So the blue bar or the bottom part of the bar is our existing debt. You see as we get out to fiscal year 2029, that blue bar drops down. That's when we paid off one of our existing debt issuances. And then the red is our proposed or new debt. This includes the Braemar and El Estero project debt that we had in the green in the early years. That is one of the benefits of state revolving fund loan is not only is it a low-interest loan, but we also don't start paying that principal and interest back or that debt service payment back until two or three years after the project's been moving. So we don't start paying that debt really until fiscal year 2027. So it allows us to transition in rates over time and try and minimize and smooth our debt service. So you do see the one peak there in 2028, but otherwise, we've tried to keep that as level as possible.
Mayor Protem Jordan, you remember as a commissioner, Water Commissioner, this was of particular interest to you and looking at this, we are, and you'll see this with water too, we are working to keep that debt kind of balanced and what you do see is an increase here and largely that's inflation, this cost of things going up. But for the most part, we are doing our due diligence that as we pay certain debt on, we're taking on, that's part of our master plan of maintaining our capital and maintaining our debt such that it doesn't grow out of control. So similar message here when we get to water.
And as we go through this, that is one of the drivers as we think about what is our overall revenue requirement is adding together our annual O and M expenses, our rate-funded capital, so what are we reinvesting in the system on an annual basis, that annual debt service payment, and then any transfers to reserves. So on this slide, the gray bottom part is our annual O and M expense. You'll see that increasing over time based on our inflationary assumptions. The blue is our rate-funded capital or the second part of the bar. You'll see two orange slices there in fiscal year 24 and 25 where we're actually putting a little bit of money into reserves on the wastewater side and then our debt service growing as we go out into the future. That dashed horizontal line is our current annual revenues. So in fiscal year 24, you can see that we're just below our actual expenses, but as you go out across the years as our O and M increases, as our debt service increases, and really when you get out to about fiscal year 27, if we kept rates at their current levels, we would barely be paying or funding our annual O and M expenses. So kind of paying those ongoing bills and not having any funds available for capital going forward. Our goal on the rate study then is to take that dashed line and tip it up so it touches the top of each of those bars. And that delta or that difference between our revenues today and the projected revenues is what we need to recover through rates. As I mentioned, rates are our primary funding source for the overall utility revenue requirement. To compare our options, if you remember, we started out with our 17% to adjust rates as we went forward. We have the two options here. You can see option one is a 12% annually across the board. We are looking at option two, our revised option. You can see we brought that down to 10 and a half, 10, 10, and nine and a half. As part of that, it would look really pretty if those were all 10s. Unfortunately, to try and make that tie out to hit our reserve targets and other elements, we needed to adjust that first year a little more and we could drop that fourth year a little bit as part of that. That results in those average customer bill prior to our Proposition 218 process and cost of service, increasing somewhere in between $6 and $7, $6 to $8, sorry, monthly per year going forward as part of that. So working with staff, prioritizing capital, we were able to bring that down, shifting those capacity projects out as part of that to minimize those rate impacts to customers. So how does that all break down? Trying to come back and develop a projection of that 10 and a half percent or that first year average monthly increase of $6.43. You can see here, we split this between three of the primary categories, our salaries and benefits, our allocated costs. Those are the indirect costs. Those are the general fund or city services that benefit the wastewater utility. So legal, human resources, finance, all those costs that still support the utilities that come through the budget as well as insurance and other costs and then capital reserves. So you can see the majority of the impact here is on the capital side. That is one of the drivers and you'll see the similar slide on the water side as well. But of the $6.43, $2.91 is capital, $1.84 is salaries and benefits, and $1.68 is our allocated costs. And this is fairly similar across the four-year period. It shifts a little bit, but provides you with an idea of what those changes are annually. Getting to our ending reserve balances or reserve funds, this is based on this option two. The dashed line going across the screen is our council policy level. That is made up of two items. The first is our contingency and disaster reserves. That's based on 25% of our total O and M combined between the two, and that is the same as all other city funds. The remainder is made up of the lesser of our average next four years of capital less debt financed or 5% of our net asset value. And in this case, we're using the average of the next several years to calculate that. So this in the finance committee meeting today was the discussion of was there movement here on this line? Can we bring that line down and what benefit would that have to, I'll call it on average, those 10% annual rate adjustments on the wastewater side? So that's something we're going to come back with at the next time to try and look at what benefit that may have. Obviously, changing the reserve policy is a council discussion and so that would be part of this overall process as we go through this study to look at that. And then just a slide to say if we did know rate adjustments, remember we showed that difference between our current revenues and our expenses. This is the inverse of that as we get out three years, then our reserves start going negative to fund the same overall costs that we've identified in option two. So to summarize the wastewater revenue requirement, rate adjustments are necessary to support the annual operating and capital needs of the wastewater utility. We've talked about a couple of the key drivers being some of the increased inflation on both operating and capital costs. The prior rate study projected about 6 to 6.5% rate adjustments during this time period. So again, a bit higher at our average of around 10%, primarily driven by those impacts we've talked about, the O and M inflation, the allocated costs, and Mr. Hagmark mentioned the increase in capital costs. This is not just a wastewater discussion, it's actually a water discussion as well and it's not a City of Santa Barbara discussion, it's actually an industry discussion right now as we've looked at the increasing capital costs we've seen. Moving on.
Is there any sense or feeling up here on splitting these up for questions and doing wastewater questions first and then getting the rest of the presentation and then doing water questions? Is everybody capable of doing all the questions at once? Okay, carry on.
Moving on to water revenue requirement. Two wasn't enough for water, so we ran three options for you all to consider and actually we developed these based on the discussions we had with the Water Commission to walk through and look at the sensitivity essentially like we're talking about on the reserve funds to evaluate the options for water. So option one, again, the planned capital, what we had in place moving forward and as part of that was to meet council policy reserves in each year. So not dip down, but to hit it in each year. Option two, same planned capital, but we're going to dip reserves down and see if we can transition rates in over time. And then option three was reduced main replacement. And we had a good discussion in finance committee about, well, why main replacement? And really, that was the go-to back in the day of when we were not able to fund everything, main replacements were reduced over time. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go forward as well. For water, option two is also the recommendation. We'll make sure we meet our council policy levels by fiscal year 2028. But part of the discussion, and was a really good discussion with Water Committee, was maintaining that main replacement program. It's critical to the city's services and how that moves forward as part of this.
So before we start this video here, the cost of main breaks are significant. This particular one we'll show you here was just over $1 million for this main break, but on average, we're spending about 3/4 of a million a year now addressing main breaks and the damage they do to city streets. But that cost does not represent the losses of our homeowners, the inefficiencies, the delayed getting to work, all those kinds of things. And so I thought this particular break was helpful because it did garnish some significant attention, so.
6:52, we're recapping today's top stories. A broken water main has created a big mess for a Santa Barbara neighborhood. This is a live look at Ladera Street covered in mud and debris from the water main break that happened on the McKinley Elementary School property. First report around 4:30 this morning, people noticed a lot of water on the streets and then all that debris. Police, fire, and public works have responded. The water has now been turned off. The condo complex at the base of the hill below McKinley got the worst of it. You see, they've finally brought in the backhoe there to be able to push some of this out of the way and clear it up as much as possible. Lot of mud in the middle of the street. Again, cleanup underway on Ladera Street in Santa Barbara after this water main break.
So this was a broken main at McKinley School and caused significant damage here and obviously disruption to everyone who lives here. And if you go to the next slide, you know, we've been anticipating this and had a healthy conversation with Water Commission and City Council about the need to invest in water mains. We had a program for years where we were doing 1% a year. It was not keeping up. Our main break history was growing. The council decided to move to a 2% policy, which is showing results. We are starting to finally see our main breaks going down, which is great. I mean, we're still getting about 80 main breaks a year, which is still too many. It takes a big toll on our staff and it makes a big toll on our community. And so really needed to continue investing here and Water Commission was very confident in wanting to continue that because typically this is where we would make reductions to try and ease rates in the past, particularly during the pandemic and during the last recession when we made cuts here. And they just eventually don't pencil out, these costs will balloon. And to kind of drive home that point, this is one that just even someone who's working in this industry blew me away is just how much water main replacement costs have escalated. Since 2020, costs have gone from just over, what is it, about 1.2 million a mile, we do six miles a year, to 2.7 million a mile, just huge changes. And these are local contractors getting these jobs. These are local people doing this construction, but this just reflects the construction community right now. It is a lot of costs coming from changes in equipment, labor, materials. This is very concerning and we have plans to sit down with our local contracting community and talk with them more about is there places where we can work together to bring these costs under control? But this is what we're battling right now is these escalating costs. They have certainly, we did not, we planned for some inflation in this area, but nowhere. 20% a year, we did not plan for.
And this is what I mentioned, this is not a City of Santa Barbara challenge. This is an industry challenge right now. I shared this morning earlier that at a meeting last week, we had a very similar slide for another agency in California where they are seeing similar, actually a little more increase in these costs. And so it's something challenging the water industry. It does roll into the wastewater industry a little bit, but it really seems to be more focused on the water side right now. And that was one of the key drivers when we met with Water Commission and talking about what our overall capital plan should look like. They did ask the hard questions, as I mentioned, of what does this look like if we do shift this out, that option three? But these were the projections to fund that full plan going forward, which was 16%, 12.5%, 5.5%. And you can see those larger increases in fiscal year 25 and 26 with those first two large increases as part of that. Again, working internally with staff, updating our projections with finance department and others to develop our projection did allow us to do some transition on both of these a little bit. To give you a summary of the capital for water, very similar to the wastewater, the bottom part of this bar is our rate-funded capital or the annual renewal and replacement. Kind of as a side note, one of the goals of the studies we were putting together, the capital funding analysis, was to get that first bar, really get that closer to what our annual main replacement program is, right? Those are annual reinvestments in the system. We should be funding those on a quote pay-as-you-go basis, so we're not borrowing to fix the things in our system when we have larger one-time projects that we need to use debt for, which is the green part here. The early green in this is the VicTrace Reservoir Repair and the Cada Reservoir Resiliency Project. And so those are two ongoing projects that again, are being debt-financed through SRF loans, or one of them through an SRF loan to fund that as we go forward. And then a little bit of reserve use in here. Again, this is option two, so you'll see a little more reserve use in fiscal year 24 and 25 as our goal was to hit reserve targets by the end of fiscal year 2028, year four of this study. As Mr. Hagmark alluded to, on the water side, we have a very similar approach as we did on the wastewater side. The blue or the first part of the bar is our existing debt service. You'll see in fiscal year 28, we have one of our debt issuances dropping off. The red bar includes again, that current debt going on that we're planning for again, the majority of that coming through that SRF loan that we're able to fund over time and able to transition that in. So actually, the water annual debt service over this first four-year period, fiscal year 25 through 28, is actually declining a little bit. So helps us a little bit with that transition to rates as we go forward. Combined, adding together our four primary components of our revenue requirement, our annual O and M expenses, our rate-funded capital in the blue or the middle, any reserve funding in the orange, you see a couple slices there, or the green, the debt service, again, that debt service staying fairly constant, slight decrease over this four-year period. And then our dashed horizontal line, which reflects our current revenues. So very similar to our wastewater discussion, in this case on water. And again, these are in no particular order when I stack the bars. Just from a visual perspective, you can see here that we're not funding our debt service as we start moving out into the future. You could flip-flop the debt service and the rate-funded capital, but ultimately, we're deficient of funds as we go forward. So what does this look like with our revised and adjusted analysis? Again, these are for each of the three options. The option one did not change much from what was originally presented to Water Commission, slight little changes in there. Option two are recommended and discussion from Finance Committee this morning. You can see is 12, 12, 9, and 9. And you do see some reductions in option three, but again, reducing a critical program of annual main replacements. That annual, sorry, that monthly annual impact based on those percentages for that average water customer, and again, this is a little different because water customers can use a variety of different amounts of water, right? Maybe it's 6 HCF or 100 cubic feet, or maybe it's 10 or 20 HCF. This is based on our average customer of 8 HCF as we go forward. And so you can see that 12 to $15 per month, per year increase based on the overall assumptions here. Again, prior to cost of service, prior to what we'll talk about in a little bit here with how we establish the tier pricing. So what makes up that 12% of the $13.65, a little more capital and reserve component here? Again, this is primarily. Again, this is primarily the capital side, the reserves. You just saw some little orange slices in there, not a lot of impact as we went through this. Uh, our operating cost being, sorry, that being eight dollars and twenty-five cents. So the majority of our increase, a dollar seventy-one for operational, a dollar ninety-nine for salaries and benefits, eighty-five cents for allocated costs and eighty-five cents for debt. So again, as our debts coming down, it's a small component or staying relatively flat. Uh, capital is the key driver here as part of this. And this is very fairly similar, again, across the five-year window as we look at that. Our ending water reserves, again, based on our option two analysis, you can see we're just above minimums at this point in time, but then we dropped. Then remember I showed in that first year, we were using reserves to fund capital. That brings us below and then we get slightly above our council policy as part of this. So again, this is what we'll look at is can we bring that line, that dashed line down a little bit? And then what's the sensitivity of that, right? Does that, does that allow us to reduce the rate adjustments by a percent or two? What does that look like while still maintaining reasonable reserves? And reserves are important for a couple reasons. One, for the emergencies. Uh, two, when we do issue debt, long-term debt, we do have to maintain reserve levels and that actually provides us, if we have to go outside of the SRF loan to the financial markets to issue revenue bonds, reserves are one of those components that are ranked highly when you go out for your rating, which would be your interest rate. And so having a good credit rating as a city and a utility, reserves are part of that discussion. So that's the part we'll work through and present that back to you all on what that looks like, given the full direction of the council.
You know, he refers as, like, utility or the money?
So again, another slide as we look at this, just thinking about if there are no adjustments. Again, we're deficient as we know based on current rates. So again, we would go into a negative reserve balance in our fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven. So overall, rate adjustments again are necessary to fund our annual operating capital needs. That's driven in part by our inflationary increases we've experienced the last several years and projected inflation to our annual O and M expenses, our changes in allocated costs, the insurance IT fleet, as well as increases in annual main replacement costs we, Mr. Hagmark talked about and, and other increases. It's not just limited to our mains, it's actually many of our different capital projects. As a point of reference, we were looking at five percent a year from the last rate study. That was pre-pandemic, pre-inflation craziness as we went forward. And so that's part of that discussion that we have today. So as we look at this combined, as a combined water and wastewater bill, here are the option two, recommended percentage adjustments. These are not additive. We don't add each year and that is the rate adjustment. In reality, it's a combined bill where we look at what is the total change between the bill that the city's customers receive. In this case, the city bill includes water, which is the blue, wastewater, which is the green, yellow, which is solid waste, which will be coming on a separate path to the city council for a rate adjustment in the future. For this study, it's been, or for this chart, it's preliminary, preliminarily estimated at two percent increase to the single-family solid waste rate. And then the utility tax, the UUT. And so what you can see here is for the typical single-family customer, we're using eight HCF, hundred cubic feet, sixty-five gallon trash can, green waste recycled one times a week, one time a week, that bill would increase by per month, twenty-two dollars and nine cents or a nine point one percent overall increase. One of the bigger discussions we had at the Water Commission is what impact would this have on a multifamily customer? This is a challenging question. There are some multifamily customers that are individually metered. The vast majority of multifamily customers are billed with, off a master meter or some other setup and that does not go directly to the renter. That goes to the landlord, the property owner, however that is set up as part of that. So in this case, we looked at what is that typical multifamily customer that is individually metered and what is the impact? So again, no solid waste here. Generally that's taken care of through the property management or through that, that, that homeowner's association. So in this case, we have our water bill is the blue again, wastewater is green and the utility tax as, uh, the blue, the light blue up top. And you can see it's an eleven dollar and thirty-seven cent change for those individually metered multifamily customers. Now, part of that is when you look at the water consumption and wastewater generation from a multifamily living unit, it is much less, actually a little less than half of what the typical single-family customer uses. So in this case, this is based on four HCF, hundred cubic feet per month for those customers. And so again, a little bit of a, a lower bill impact to them because they do use less water, given it's generally all indoor use, right? The outdoor use is a separate irrigation meter or a common meter for those outside So last couple of slides here, uh, talking about our cost of service. As I've mentioned, one of the key elements of meeting our requirements of proposition two eighteen is developing cost-based and proportional rates. We have the analysis built in the model, but as I've mentioned, this is a sequential process and whatever we change in the revenue requirement filters into our cost of service and rate design. So we're finalizing these, uh, we've got them all put together. The key here is how and why does the city incur cost to provide service and what benefit does that have for each customer class of service or rate schedule? So again, single-family, multifamily, commercial, industrial as part of that. On water, we look at our average day or our cost of water supply. So our resource stacking that I'll talk about here in a moment or customer related, that's our fixed charge component to our rates. And on wastewater, it's volume or strength. Strength has to do with how hard it is to treat and more costly to treat the higher-strength waste or customer-related. And our goal is to develop a cost of service that reflects your system and customer characteristics. And as we've gone through this, the wastewater cost of service is moving forward nicely. Uh, the past costs have been fairly accurate as what we're looking at today in our distribution. We haven't had as many changes to your customer or system characteristics since the last study. On the water cost of service, it is moving a little more slowly, primarily because it's based on how you've incurred cost and a big driver there is the different water supply resources and how you incur those costs. One of the calculations that we make in the rate study is the development of rates by customer and tier. So if we think about your single-family, there are three tiers to their water bill. The more you use, the higher that rate is to reflect the cost of providing that level of service. Now, the way in part that that's developed, but the driving component of that is the council prioritization from back around twenty seventeen when this was developed. What this shows on the right-hand part of this slide is our supply sources. So in the city's case, we have groundwater, we have surface water, we have our state water or our purchased water, and we have D-SAL water. Each of those are different sources and they've been prioritized based on the least expensive to the most expensive. And that allows us to provide that tier pricing at a higher cost based on the amount of water you're getting from each source. Now, down the left-hand side, you have the customer class or tier. So priority one, the first blue line, tier one irrigation agriculture. That is based on groundwater, so the lowest cost that we have. Going into priority two, which is our tier one for single-family and multifamily, that is a blend of the remaining groundwater that we would use on average and the surface water that's available as part of that. So that develops the tier pricing in our cost of service. Tier one commercial is surface water. Tier two, single-family, multifamily, which is our fourth priority, is a mix or a blend now of surface water, state water and D-SAL water. So as we start thinking about how these line up, then that is based on the pricing that we see. Now, what's happened since the last study is we've incurred costs differently, right? Some costs have gone up for different costs, water supplies. The other part of this is that middle proportion where we see the class demand as a percent of the total. As an example, irrigation agriculture, the first one, they make up one point two percent of the total consumption on the water system. And so those numbers have changed slightly as well, mostly in the middle section of this chart, which is driving changes in our cost allocation. So overall, we're not recommending any changes to this, but we wanted to be the council, wanted the council to be aware that there are looking like some changes in our tier pricing that we'd be back in front of you explaining here at a future meeting. Uh, final note on this, recycled water is kind of on its, on its own, off to the side here. We have a different cost component for recycled water that's calculated specifically for the recycled water customers and the cost of that. And then finally, the fixed versus volumetric or consumption rate. If you remember, our water bills are, have a fixed monthly service charge and a consumption charge based on the amount of metered water. That's our tier pricing component of that. And there's some advantages, the way that the city has historically established the rate structure. Uh, part of that is trying to maintain a lower fixed charge. So that monthly fixed charge regardless of any consumption. And that helps us on the affordability side, right? So a lower use customer doesn't have such a large bill based on that fixed charge. And it also helps us to maintain a conservation-based rate structure. As we mentioned earlier in the presentation, one of the, the disadvantages of a lower fixed charge is when water consumption is down, we collect less revenue, yet our costs don't decrease at the same proportion as part of that. So we have eighty-five percent of our costs fixed. Historically, you've recovered thirty percent of your costs through the fixed charge. So essentially the inverse of how you incur costs. That's typical for water utilities. That's not out of the norm or ordinary for water utilities, although there has been a lot of discussion and movement in the industry about how we evaluate and recover fixed costs from customers as part of that. For this study, we're, we're recommending maintaining that same roughly thirty-seventy. It's not going to work out perfectly. It's a cost of service, so we're looking at what costs are related to those, but ultimately trying to maintain that same relationship as part of this. Now, that's done for a couple of reasons. The primary being that the city is going through an affordability study right now. And one of the outcomes of that study is going to be some recommendations of how to address affordability impacts of your water utility and subs, and wastewater as well for that matter. Uh, but ultimately, as you move forward with that and you have some concrete pro, programs to assist with affordability concerns or ability to assist those customers, that would be the time where we would say, let's look at what that level of fixed charge is when we have a means to reduce that impact to customers that need that the most.
So back in the spring of twenty twenty-three, we initiated, uh, an affordability study with the Alliance for Water Efficiency. And Water Commission received a couple of presentations. There was one back in October of twenty-three and then most recently in January of twenty-twenty-four. And we've held numerous public engagement opportunities, starting in mid, mid-October. Uh, they included public meetings. We had a survey that was open from mid-October to the end of December. Uh, and then we had the draft report comment period. So we had the draft report and, and an executive summary on our affordability website. Uh, and that, uh, comment period just ended in mid-February. But we are looking to come back to Water Commission, um, with a final study. We're looking at spring of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and the, the basic, what the study boiled down to is that the city is a leader in supporting water affordability, but there is always opportunities to improve. And so, um, we will present the final, the final affordability study to Water Commission. We're looking at, at March right now for that. And we, staff will develop and prioritize actions and review and discuss those prioritizations and those actions with Water Commission. And we do anticipate coming to council, full council, with our final report as well and those recommendations of actions. Okay, so the next steps or the proposed timeline, uh, here we are at two twenty-seven. We did finance committee this morning and here we are with council this afternoon. So we are looking for that recommendation, uh, to move forward. Uh, and if that goes through, then we will bring back our, uh, proposed rates to Water Commission in March, uh, and then come back here to finance committee and, and council in mid-April. And then we'll have, uh, a mail, we'll mail our notice and we'll have a webinar in October, I'm sorry, in May. And then we will, uh, come back to council in late Jan, in June. My goodness, I've been working on this a long time, all these months. Uh, so we will come back in, uh, late June with our rate hearing, uh, for our rate increases. And then with that, we welcome your input and any questions.
Thank you. Um, I still don't see buttons on most of our screens, so just wave at me for questions. Councilmember Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Um, and, uh, first I just want to thank you, Mr. Corn and staff and the Water Commission for being so consistent and trying to keep the rates low. Um, no matter how many times I've seen this, it's still a shocking number. It's, it's high. Um, so I have just a couple of questions. Um, I also really wanted to thank you for adding the multifamily analysis. That was really helpful also. So I thought I heard you say it's not additive, but I just want to clarify that because I thought it was additive.
It is. My, my comment there was on this slide where we had the two, it's not, uh, like if you looked at fiscal year twenty-five, it's not a twenty-two point five percent impact to the customer bill. It's actually a twenty-two dollar and a nine percent increase in their bill. The annual adjustments are, yes, on those tables where we had the, you know, six dollars, seven dollars, those are additive. Thank you for that.
So it's not like compound interest, but the amount is added.
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to be, be sure I'm getting the range on this. If it was, and it was like six to eight dollars monthly for wastewater, twelve to sixteen monthly for water, so that would be something like twenty-four dollars monthly. And so then the next year would be forty-eight dollars monthly and then seventy-two dollars monthly and then ninety-six dollars monthly.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's going up almost a hundred dollars a month over a four-year, by the end of that four-year period. And, um, I guess I can save that for comments, but like, wow, that's, um, too much. Um, so I have some questions about what, what effect would lowering the reserve? And I didn't watch finance, so maybe we could have, um, were there recommendations out of finance that affected this too? But what, what effect if you lower the reserve? Does that have an effect on our bond rating for some of these capital improvement loans? Or if you could speak to that?
Yeah, so that was one of the comments or discussions we had during finance committee this morning was if we lower that, let's be reasonable, uh, with what we're doing here, not completely just dropping it in a, you know, and have those unintended consequences going forward. So that's something we're going to look at as we evaluate that is what level could we lower that to? And then come back to you all with, okay, here's what we feel is reasonable within our bounds of maintaining adequate reserves as well as the future impacts with future debt service on the horizon.
Thank you. And then, um, how, how much of this, and maybe it's not a number you can quantify, but how much of this is cost increases for building future capacity? So is it, is it rate pairs today who would be paying these increased costs for future residents of the city who aren't here yet?
Yeah. Mayor Potem, Jordan, councilmember Sneddon, there are no capacity improvements in this project. These are all replacing kind, just like the electrical Elstero. It's, it's not increasing the capacity of the plant. Our water mains were replacing in kind. Um, so this isn't building out for development if development comes along. We want to do some planning to make sure we understand where those pinch points are. But, um, I think that's going to be a good conversation forum is if there are capacity constraints as a result of the development, how exactly do we make sure that those developments are picking up those costs?
Yeah, because that was my follow-up, because I, I thought, um, I thought Mr. Corn said updates to the wastewater system to accommodate state housing mandates to get ready for that. Is, am I not interpreting that as?
No, it's, it's great. I'm sorry for any confusion that. We, we are planning to do the modeling for that now that we have the new Rena numbers and we have more direction from council and the state on what we need to do. Now we can put those into our wastewater models and water models and see if that, what impacts it has. We know that we have some capacity issues in the system during wet weather events when we get way too much rainwater in our system. we get way too much rainwater in our system. So those are on our radars, but are there other locations that may be, for example, the Lacumbra Mall redevelopment that may have impacts to the system and we don't have those answers yet?
Okay, thank you, because that's the next direction I was going to go is in impact fees of new development. It doesn't seem that ratepayers today should be paying for those, you know, future infrastructure developments. So then just last question, how does, or how could, or what the relationship with Measure C money, which is for critical infrastructure? And I'm just thinking about the water main replacement rates and is that wholly housed within an enterprise fund or is, is some of it supplemented with Measure C, which I mean, my feeling is it's open for discussion, but the, that voters were voting for infrastructure improvements and they are not necessarily aware of this one is in this enterprise and this one is that, but they just want the water mains to be up to date, so?
Yeah, so there is no general fund or Measure C funding going into the water and wastewater enterprise funds. We are solely funded on rate revenue and grants and SRF loans. So this isn't, isn't currently, and when they were drafting that measure, I don't believe that they specifically, of course, they said capital improvements, infrastructure improvements, but I, I don't think any of the discussions ever included water or wastewater infrastructure in them at the time when the council was discussing that. It never, never came up. So it was sold to the voters as revenue for non, I would call non-enterprise funds, but it can be used, I assume, yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing limit, and that's maybe for discussion too, but as times are changing and, and this, I mean, my only memory about Measure C was that it was not to be for salaries, but if, if something is wholly enterprise fund that is largely infrastructure based, that there may be some thing to look at with that if we're talking about reserves or other, other things. So that was a question. Thank you.
Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm going to ask if it's okay, just the same questions that I asked at finance today to try to draw out some of these points, because it's just a really important, important topic. First, on the use of reserves, which is something that I brought up at finance, just for the sake of conversation, it came out during the meeting today and I don't see Mr. DiMartini in the room, but that our reserve rate for the water and wastewater is ten percent and fifteen percent plus an additional bucket on top of that to account for capital uses and debt service. So I think we said that was something like five percent, so that's, we're in like the thirty percent range. Does that, does that track with what you guys heard this morning?
The, the fifteen and ten, yes. I don't recall the capital side.
But there is a third bucket.
A third bucket, yes. You are correct, yes, absolutely.
And you can kind of see this is the total of all of our reserves here. And just to kind of show, we are planning to dip into reserves, but I think to your point is that recovery, we had part of this plan, and that was a Water Commission comment is, well, when are we going to get out of this? So we do have planned use and then we recover. So that means in years twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, there, there are rate revenue coming in that is going to backfill reserves and build it back up. And so that has a compounding effect and you can see that slope too. So what happens is the, as inflation hits us, construction costs go up, what we have to hold in reserves goes up too. So it's, it's kind of one of those challenges you're sitting here dealing with what I consider kind of a slow-moving disaster in the inflation world, but then you also have to increase your reserves. You're kind of compounding that inflationary impact. So yes, to your point, we are using reserves. That is making a big difference. If we compared option one, in which we do not use reserves, I can quickly, I can quickly go to that, it is pretty significant. Here it is right here. So the difference between option one and option two is use of reserves. So it has a big difference, makes a big difference being able to pull on those reserves.
And then, so the, the point of bringing up the idea of considering a change in the policy altogether to set a different threshold for fully funded reserves is that were we to lower it, and, and I so appreciate the way you framed it in this presentation, certainly it would have to be responsible. And I, I mean, that almost goes without saying, but maybe it doesn't. Any reduction in our reserve policy would equal, on the other end, some reduction in what we have to pass on to ratepayers. So, you know, the expectation shouldn't be that it would go from a fourteen percent increase to a one percent increase, but there would be some commensurate reduction in charges to ratepayers were we to find that responsible middle ground to reduce our reserve requirement in the water and wastewater fund.
That is a correct statement. I agree.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your openness to considering that. And then briefly, just to touch on the two other items that we spoke about, this is, whether we reduce the reserve requirement or not, a huge, huge increase that, that is really jarring to look at. And so communication is going to be key and getting this message out and really communicating why these infrastructure projects are required, what the costs are coming from. I mean, it's just so central. And we spoke earlier about how we are going to be doing more than just mailing a notice. So I'm hoping you can tell the public and, and the council a little bit more about sort of the creative ways that we're going to try to communicate why we are where we are and where we're going.
Yeah, so thank you, Councilmember Harmon. We have contracted with Katson Associates who does help with public outreach for, they really focus on water agencies, but they are, we've got them slated to help us with the messaging on this because we knew it was going to be more than just a rate notice. So yes, and we will be talking with Water Commission in March, next month, about that messaging. We're going to hopefully have some draft messaging, get their feedback on what are the salient points we want to make? And then, of course, coming up with graphics to help, you know, digest everything that we just went through in the last forty-five minutes, help to condense that so that hopefully the majority of the community can understand what's going on here. And then, as in the past, we're hoping to hold at least one webinar so that the community can get on, get the same interactive kind of presentation and be able to answer, ask questions as well. But certainly we'll, we'll do our best to prepare the community so that that public hearing in June can be informed.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. And actually, just you sort of triggered another question to me, as it pertains to this analysis of revising the reserve policy to get at a different rate adjustment. I mean, if you're going to Water Commission in March, have we thought through the timing on how that might work? Because presumably we would have to vote.
Yeah, so what, what is, I should back up and talk about what our noticing entails. So when we notice our customers, that is the highest that the council can adopt. You can always adopt something less. And so I, I think what, where we hope to get is a comfort level that this is the upper limit of what we would be adopting. And then we can continue to have conversations up until June on which you will need to make then a decision about do we adopt what we noticed or something slightly less, but at least we're in a position to, to make that decision.
Awesome, thank you. That's very helpful. And then my final question, I'm almost not totally sure how to tee it up, but you gave such a great answer at finance today, talking about the affordability study. And one of my major concerns about multifamily, even with the information presented, right, is that a lot of multifamilies, as you said, only have one meter for many units and it doesn't mean that that cost isn't being passed on to the tenants. It just means that it goes through the landlord. So if you could speak a little bit about how that affordability study is addressing that particular issue and how we're thinking about subsidy programs that might get at those folks who do not receive water bills but are certainly bearing the brunt of these increases and are among probably the most unable to, to bear these increases?
Yeah, thank you for queuing that up. Yeah, we are really fortunate that we set out on this. And again, we're kind of blazing new territory with this affordable water study, water audit. Handful of people throughout the country have done this. This is kind of fun and we really challenged the consultant because we said we really want to know multifamily. We really want to understand the impacts there because we believe that's where the affordability challenge is. And so the, the study, which is available online, does really do a good job of kind of breaking down that parts of the city that are likely to be, struggle the most with those bills. But it is a challenge and they recognize that in the study that what, what can be done when you don't have that direct relationship? And I did get clarification, eighty percent of our multifamily do not have water meters. So it's really interesting because we've been mandating water meters since the late eighties. And so it, you know, just tells you how much of our, our multifamily housing turns over or gets renovated, but so only twenty percent actually get a meter, get a bill, have a relationship with us. And so it does create a challenge and trying to figure out, you know, if we did offer a, an incentive or rebate to the property owner, making sure that that trickled down to their customers or, yeah, tenants. So it's a, it's a, it's a real struggle, I think, to try and, and get at this because there are so many things that we just talked about. I mean, housing could go up, rent could go up ten percent and for some, that's three hundred bucks a month increases. Where does this fit along with the electric bill that's going up and everything else? And it's, it's a compounding issue that you were getting at, which I really appreciated. It just all like snowballs. But I, I do think that there are things, and we have been a leader. We have the cheapest water on the South Coast if you are a low water user. You want to live in Santa Barbara. We have done so much here to protect the low income and water conserving customers. Now, having said that, how do we, you know, looking ahead, how do we continue to protect that group? And I think that's, that's our challenge and it's not an easy one as I, we kind of talked about just the affordability thing. We eighty percent, eighty-five percent of our costs are fixed. So when we see those swings in conservation, it really has major impacts on our ability to operate. So anyway, lots of challenges to come. I'm really excited about the study and we will bring it back once we've really vetted it with Water Commission. We'll bring it back for a healthy conversation with City Council.
Thank you very much and thank you all for your thoughtfulness on this difficult subject. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am, we don't respond to raise hands. If you'd like to make a comment, you can fill out, you can fill out a slip at the back of the room, okay? Yeah. Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. I too am going to kind of go through the questions I went through at finance. It was a really good discussion and many of the issues that Councilmember Sneddon raised were discussed a little more in-depth, as you could see with the multifamily and then Measure C and all that. So I think it's a, it would be good to kind of rehash that. So the first question outside of this is because it comes up is the potable reuse and the changes in state regulations. If you could just give an update on what's taking place and what that means for us?
Yes, Councilmember Friedman. The state in December two thousand and twenty-three approved regulations for direct potable reuse and that is basically treating your wastewater to drinking water. So those regulations are out there. There are some agencies moving forward or have been moving forward with that. I don't think we want to be at the tip of the spear on this one. The costs I've seen so far are pretty frightening. Ventura is moving forward with a project. Their costs have gone, I think their original estimates were a hundred and fifty million. Now they're looking at five hundred million for basically a pant that's equivalent to our D-SAL plant. So really significant costs. Do I see it as a supply for the city in the future? Yes, at, at least not in the next ten years. I think D-SAL still makes the right decision for us. It's much more affordable than pivoting to potable reuse, but I'm not ruling that out. I, I do think we just live in a, a very vulnerable part of California and we need to continue to maintain a very diverse water supply mix.
Hey, thanks for the, the update on that. I know it's something that's kind of cutting edge and that is a huge cost. And so the next question I had, if you could pull up slide twenty-three? I just wanted to pull this out actually because it, it gets into the discussion about messaging and to the public of, of, these are high rates that are under consideration. And it's important that we get that information out to the public on, on why this is necessary. But this slide in particular shows that just four years ago, to replace one mile of our water mains was one point one million and now it's approaching two point one million. And those are costs that we have no control over to that extent. So my, my question would be, is, I wanted to pull out a couple of things that you said and a couple of follow-up questions is the policy used to be the one percent replacement per year. The council about half a decade ago upped it to about two percent. And you mentioned that the number of reductions of water main breaks has taken place. So what was it before and what are we experiencing now in terms of numbers?
Councilmember Friedman, at the peak, we were over a hundred main breaks a year and we are under, on track to be under eighty. We do have a nice graphic. We've been talking with Water Commission pretty extensively about this. So we are making headway, which I was surprised we'd make headway so quickly. We do have quite a bit of cast iron. It's about fifty percent of our system that is aging out, basically reaching its eighty year lifespan. And so that's what we're trying to get ahead on and, and try and get those main breaks down in it. It particularly makes it challenging for us because when those mains break, it requires an enormous amount of staff time. A lot of our operators, most of our operators don't live here in town, so they're having to come in in the middle of the night to repair these mains. Our customers are out of water. It's always an inconvenient time to be out of water. We take it for granted sometimes how easy water just shows up and goes away. It's pretty convenient. But it, at the end of the day, when it doesn't happen, it really throws off people's day. And then, of course, the inconvenience in the streets and really trying to bring that down. And again, we have such an old city that we just have so much of this aging infrastructure to deal with. We have a fairly, and I think that's really the difference between our neighbors. We just, because our city is so old, we just have to be a little more aggressive with our water main replacement. Most of them, I think, have less than a one percent goal.
Yeah, this is, I appreciate you putting up this slide too. And that, that gets to the key of some of the drivers of this, of our aging infrastructure. And in the option three of the rates where it was the low, the lower rate increase, but it, it brought it back down to one percent for the replacement. Could that, you mentioned it, but I also want to highlight it. Could it put us back into a dissent, a consent decree if we kind of, our numbers started going back up and what would that mean?
Yeah, so just to distinguish there, the consent decree was related to sewer, sewer main investments. And at this point, we are investing, we're replacing one percent a year in wastewater and that seems to be, seems to be on track. We've got other, I think we're right now trying to focus on helping our property owners maintain their laterals, which is the next frontier in kind of maintaining the collection system. On the water mains though, as you can see with this graphic here, we really found that with two percent was really necessary to, to start to see a reduction because right now our main, main breaks are costing us about a three-quarters of a million dollars a year. And you can think about as money that could be put to new pipe, you know, in my mind, but you know, that just, that's not, not a wasted money, but it's unfortunate to have to spend that on reactive repairs when you could be spending it on, you know, proactive. And so we're looking to kind of change that discussion by getting ahead of this and getting those main breaks down, which I think will save the community money in the long run if we unfortunately kick the can down and reduce the main spending. I, I think those costs are going to just continue to balloon and we're going to be spending a disproportionate amount on reactive maintenance.
And not to mention, if, if we delay some of those and just push them out and they don't break, but when we get to replacing them, the cost could almost double. As you said, so for the same pipe we could replace today, if we replaced it five years ago, it would have cost us a million less, which, and so I'm going to go in just a few follow-up questions. We talked about other revenues and measures. So if, if you could pull up slide twenty-eight. So on number three, if, for the water, if, if we wanted to say go with that, that third option, which is the lowest rate increase, but find a way to perhaps fund that, that maintenance, that instead of reducing the maintenance on the water mains that we would fund it? You know, there's been discussion out there, you know, could we use Measure C for that? Could we use general fund? What other options, what are the options that are out there? And would you recommend any of them or not?
Yeah, I think, I think we probably need to come back to you on that. You know, I, I don't have any like really easy answers for you. I think Measure C is going to be a real challenge. Council's already got a lot of priorities on Measure C funding. The funding that we're looking at there is about one point, one and a half million dollars a year is what we'd be looking at to bridge that gap. That's, it, rough speaking, every seven hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue yields one, one percent. So that's roughly what you're looking at is we'd need to find a million and a half somewhere each year to close that gap.
That's helpful because then if we were to use, say, Measure C, that is going towards our, our roads primarily, but other infrastructure that's also. that is going towards our, our roads primarily, but other infrastructure that's also facing the same types of challenges that we have. So those would be delayed and the same types of cost pressures. So it would be, we might fix our water, water mains, but then we, at the expense of our, our roads and other infrastructure. So that is, I think that's all the questions I, I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Others? I have a couple. Remind me, aren't we partly in this situation because the last time we had a discussion on one or both of these water subjects, because we consciously made a choice to accept a less harsh rate increase than might have been appropriate? That we, that we deferred, that we knowingly deferred up some rate increases that seemed to make sense?
Mayor Pro Tem Jordan, I don't recall that. We certainly had a lot of conversation about deferring it, but I think at the end of the day, Water Commission and council said, no, we need to get this done. And we have been doing, and that's, that's the part that really challenges me. We've been consistently doing about five percent annually. So, and, and really, you know, historically, that's been pretty good to deal with inflation in the water industry. And then I think we, last year, we did six percent for wastewater. So we've been active, we've been involved, we've been paying attention. It's just, I, very frustrating that these inflationary costs are just way beyond what we had anticipated. And yeah, I am disappointed to be here in front of you, asking for such a big request. It makes me look like we fell down on our job, but we had been watching this, and it's, it's just really unfortunate. And, you know, I, Mr. Corn can kind of speak to this. He helps a lot of different utilities, and they're facing the same thing. And I just got my electric bill saying that they're going to increase rates twenty percent. And so insurance is doing the same, and it's, it's just frustrating. It's really just getting hit from every angle.
And then is there a significant ongoing post-COVID, COVID impact on our revenues that affects us, too, in catching up to the legislation that, that delayed or held up on payments for water bills?
Mayor Pro Tem Jordan, you're absolutely correct. And this is one that we are working through right now. I'm really, really appreciative of Finance. They have drilled into this, and it's really a mind-boggling number. We're, our, we have customers that are chosen not to. Some cannot afford it, but there's a good chunk who've just chosen not to because we're not, we weren't having penalty fees, and we weren't turning services off. Right now, the estimate is somewhere around nine million in outstanding costs or basically water we've served and people haven't paid for. That's a huge number, but we are now penalizing for not paying, and we are seeing people. And we've now started turning off services and, for non-payment, and people are starting to pay, pay their bills. And we do, I will just put a, we have a program going for people who are behind and are financially struggling. They will, the state will pay that, and we're helping to administer that program. There's state funding available. It's like up to fifteen thousand dollars to help dig people out of, you know, when they're behind on their water bill. But yes, unfortunately, I think there are a lot of people that could pay their bill and just chose not to, and it's now become kind of a significant liability.
And then I'm presuming that most of your out-year numbers on capital are continuing reliance on state program financing. What's the comfort level in that being, you know, when we're just hearing every day now that the next three or four years that the state are going to go from robust reserves to robust deficits? Do they, do they, is the, is, is it optimistic to think that they will still continue to offer the same amount of financing to those program, those programs?
That is a very good question, and it is something we are concerned about. We, the state has a lot of pressure. There's a lot of water and wastewater agencies that need funding, and they have, do not have enough funding to go around. And it's, it's difficult because their funding is in the one to two percent range. And if you go out on the bond market, it's going to be in the five percent range. So pretty significant cost differential there, especially on a forty million dollar loan. So we share your concerns, and of course, our rate modeling here reflects us being able to get an SRF-type loan. So it would be a significant blow to have to shift to bonds at this point.
And I'm, and I'm sensitive to that argument of, you know, the reserve bucket increasing for capital projects. But that is your backup for that, that occurring unknown until, you need to go spend the money because you have the project that has to happen. But at that particular time, you can't get an SRF, there, there's nonexistent SRF financing, and you are forced to go out on that open market, right?
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Usually with these projects, let's just take the Victrace Reservoir Replacement Project. We have to front design, so that, that design's going to be about four million dollars. So we're going to be designing it. That's going to come out of our, and, and the hope, the hope is that we will get funded for construction and be able to get reimbursed for that four million and, and reimbursed, it turns into a loan. But if that SRF funding isn't there, that, it creates quite a, quite a bit of challenges. There are other funding sources out there we are looking at. WIFIA, it's another federal program that has been started up, and usually it was for very disadvantaged communities, of which there are portions of our community that are very disadvantaged. But we're going to take a stab at running, trying to get some of that funding. But unfortunately, you know, unless you have, you are violating your permits or you are, have a community that is deemed extremely impoverished, it's difficult to get the points to qualify for some of these other grants, loans.
My last kind of question, that thirty-seventy relationship always was a great conversation. And what I remember about that, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that our ability to maintain that rests with a Jordan household that has three children and four adults and would break twelve HCF routinely because we would be tearing those and, and collecting artificially higher dollars as you go up in the tiers. And those would be almost like programmed dollars that would revert back to protecting the rate structure for those who are in the same size house but only have two people in there and shouldn't be burdened with, or, and maybe are, are in a low-income house. And we're protecting that fixed ratio benefit for them. That's, right? That's the, that's the, the historical argument about having a much higher fixed rate basis than a volumetric rate basis, right?
I think it's a little more nuanced, and I'll have Mr. Corn kind of speak to that. But I, I think what we had decided was, and at the state, at the state level, it was considered a best management practice to try and keep that variable, oh, sorry, that fixed as low as you could to try and really encourage water conservation. Now, as far as how those costs get apportioned, it really does need to, at the end of the day, reflect the cost of service. So I'll have Mr. Corn kind of elaborate more on that.
Yeah, thank you. Great question, and, and it does get into that proportionality discussion and how we're impacting different customers. So your example of, you know, if you had a higher fixed charge and the disparity in the bill or difference in the bill between the low-use customer and the high-use customer, that is where we think about the proportionality element of the cost of service. And when we had our discussions back in the day of how would we want to adjust this, that was part of that, is thinking about, well, if you have a high fixed charge, then you may be disproportionately impacting that lower-use customer because of the benefits that they actually receive from that versus some of that uses a lot more water as part of that. And that's what we're trying to balance right now. That's the other part of that prioritization discussion that I talked about for water supply. This, that's the other piece we're working on right now, is what does that thirty-seventy come out to be? It's still in that neighborhood, but maintaining that proportionality of those fixed or customer-related costs versus those truly consumption or variable-related costs that the city encourages to provide service.
And then, of course, I think, like you said, the benefits of that go out the door on a, a high water resource season, for example, because I'm not out watering my plants in February and March, whereas in a drought, dry year, I would be and contributing to that system, right?
Correct, yes. And, and most of our neighboring agencies, I think, are pushing closer to forty percent. So they, they just have a much larger fixed charge, and so they're collecting a lot more of their revenue from a secure source, which provides some stability in there. And that's in lies why we, we have probably more affordable for low-income here, why we're, or low-water users.
And has that, eighty-five percent of costs are fixed. Is that number stable, going up, going down? Is it going up over time?
It's, it's, it's been staying pretty consistent in the eighty, eighty-five percent of our costs. And again, when you talk about variability, it's really electricity and chemicals, really. I mean, I need to talk about what actually gets reduced when people use less water. It's, it's those factors, yeah.
So as a former mayor once told me, Helene Schneider, it's like a big fabric, and you pull on one thread over here, and you mess up a whole bunch of other things that bunch up over there, right? So anybody have any second, second round of questions or? Okay, is there, I don't have any speaker slips up here. Madam Clerk, do we have any online public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, back to council for comments, and then to move towards a recommendation with staff. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So just first, to Councilmember Harmon, I think you would be so incredibly proud of your Water Commission and our appointees there because they're, they were, talked about changes to the reserve policy and what differences those could make in recommending that, and also very, very concerned with multifamily residences and the metering, and then especially those struggling financially, and very much in line with what hearing as it, as it moved through. So I think it's reassuring that I think that our Water Commission is, is very in line with that. And I actually do think you'd be proud of them. I also, on, on that and liaison and what, the discussion that came up, I don't discuss much, but put points out at Water Commission, is this multifamily residence. And one of the reasons I wanted to see the breakout different from that is I didn't want property owners to be artificially passing on too high of increases, saying, well, our water bill's gone up two hundred dollars, and so now your rent is going to go up two hundred dollars. Whereas if we could see that maybe those increases in multifamily, and that's something that the Water Affordability Study will also get further into, because those rates certainly will be passed on and maybe artificially inflated. So something to be looking at. I think along those lines, looking at impact fees, increasing those impact fees for future development. I mean, we have a lot of these mandates to increase production, and those will certainly have impacts to our water, wastewater rates. And then, you know, previously, we also talked about our solid waste rates. But just pertaining to today, that I, I think it's, we are constantly looking at maintaining our infrastructure. And I think in some ways, we're probably paying today for future residents of the city who aren't here yet. So I just think that's important to keep looking at and, and looking at in the modeling. I think it's a good idea to go after that nine million unpaid deferred water bill payments. And I think that's wonderful, helping people find the resources to be able to bring that in because that would make a big difference, that nine million dollars. I really want to emphasize what careful stewards, the Water Division, staff, Water Commission, and it in no way reflects on your ability to see how much inflation would impact all of these infrastructure projects and the rates. And I have seen it so many times, the emphasis on careful use of taxpayer dollars and also really trying to make water affordable for so many of our residents. I also want to emphasize here, it's something I mentioned in Water Commission, water and wastewater staff are first responders, really. And I'm not sure how many realize that most don't live in the city. Many end up spending the night here in anticipation of a storm that's coming up or during a storm that's happening. And what I want to tie this back to is often when we talk about salaries, we say, well, we don't want to do salary increases because that's going to be passed on to ratepayers, and that's going to raise that. And so I really want to just put a placeholder in this whole discussion that I don't want anything to then sort of artificially clip our discussions of what water, wastewater employees are, are able to negotiate for themselves in, in salary discussions, which clearly isn't what we're talking about today. But it comes up when we do talk about that, that those will be passed on to ratepayers. And so something in that discussion, I, I do think it's a good idea to keep looking at other ways to offset some of this critical infrastructure funding, if, if that's possible. I mean, Measure C is something that's convenient to say, but really, Councilmember Friedman, to your point about what other ways there might be to be looking at that, I think, are valuable. But I really do think impact fees for development might be one of those things for our water and our wastewater system that would be really worth looking at. And then I think Water Commission might also want to look at this thirty-seventy or whatever, this percentage of the fixed, fixed rate, just because of the, the volatility. It keeps rates low, but if then we're bringing up these types of increases, maybe smoothing it out over time might be worth, worth looking at. This is difficult for all of us to hear. I'm sure it's difficult news for you to deliver also, and just appreciating how difficult that is.
Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I agree with so much of what was just said, and I'll start by expressing my appreciation for the work that's been done here. Not only is this an incredibly difficult subject that requires a really sort of quite specific expertise, it's sensitive because of the seriousness of what we're seeing. And it's so rare, in fact, I can't think of another time where we are considering something that has quite a real measurable impact on people. And at the same time, I'm, I'm saying thank you so much for the exemplary work. I mean, it's clear that you understand the gravity of what we're talking about and, and understand the importance of, of really foregrounding our residents in, in this and, and everything as it pertains to water and wastewater, these critical elements. This is sort of the foundation of what we do as a city, and I, I really appreciate that. This could have been, it's a very difficult conversation. It, it could have been just so much worse than thanks to your work, really trying to think through mechanisms for mitigating some of that impact. How do we also maintain our infrastructure? And it just, thank you, really. It's very difficult. All that said, I'm, I'm not happy about where we are. I know you aren't either. I don't think anyone is. It's not a great day to be having these, it never would be. I will say, as I said at Finance Committee, in terms of the options that we're considering, option three is off the table for me. I am totally convinced by what I'm hearing with regard to the need to maintain our infrastructure and the implications for not doing so, not just ten, fifteen years in the future, but tomorrow. So, so to me, that is a non-starter. Option A, or option one, I think I'm confusing A and B, C, one, two, three. But the first option, the most expensive option, I appreciate as well that you came up with some alternative, recognizing that inflation and rising costs is not only a problem for us as a city, but for our residents, in our families and in our day-to-day lives. So I will support today moving forward with option two, but I, I want to just advocate very strongly for serious consideration of a reduction of our reserve policy as it pertains to the water and wastewater funds. I believe that there is a responsible middle ground that we can come to where we maintain our ability to have a meaningful bond or a helpful bond rating, where we're not setting ourselves up for disaster, where we're not pulling on a thread, and there's tons of other implications. I think there's a place that we can get to lowering I think there's a place that we can get to, lowering it a little bit to give a little bit of relief for our residents. And I really believe that that step is necessary. This is going to be incredibly difficult to communicate. It's going to be incredibly difficult to communicate even if we do reduce the reserves and have a little bit of a lower rate. But I think that that step would really be reflective of our recognition of the difficulty of living in Santa Barbara today. You know, I think, I said this earlier, I don't know a single family whose reserve funds have not been reduced. And so I think that if we can take that same step responsibly, it would be an important show of solidarity to our residents and understanding that while we do have responsibility to maintain our infrastructure, to ensure that these essential services are provided to them, we get it. And the city's feeling it. We know that our residents and families are feeling it, and I think that would help us as we move forward in this conversation. So I appreciate you taking the extra step to do that analysis and really look forward to it coming back, and something that I very strongly support. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. First, I just want to thank our staff and Mr. Corn and the Water Commission for really vetting this. This is not an easy process. Having these types of rate hikes are not something that anybody wants. At the same time, there is an expectation from the public as well that they know we are maintaining our infrastructure, because if we don't and we do what was done or in the past and not maintain it properly, the costs add up over time, and then you're doing emergency repairs, and you're not getting ahead of it. And it creates untenable costs, and you don't have any controls where if you're getting ahead of it, you're actually reducing those costs of maintenance in the long run, and you can get to rate stabilization. So our job is to keep the rates as low as possible today without sacrificing the investment in this critical infrastructure. When you're talking about water and wastewater, those are arguably the two most important, just in terms of your ability to do anything. I mean, a person cannot go more than a day or two without water. And then if our wastewater system fails, that is probably the quickest way to make a community unlivable, is a failed wastewater system. And so these are serious issues, and we need to make that proper investment. And it's staggering that in 2020, that one-mile replacement was just over a million, and here we are four years later, and it's $2 million per mile. And those are costs that are a global marketplace that are outside of our control, and we're trying to plan for those. I am supportive of looking at that 30-70, just seeing what is the industry best standards, best practices, what are our neighbors doing? Would that actually help in the long run, reduce the volatility of rates? And just give us more certainty in what we have and still allow us for the goals of conservation and control that the customers could have. And we've seen in the past, when we haven't invested enough or made decisions to defer some of the capital, I remember just before we got on council, the solid waste rates, there was a decision not to do an increase and to fund that out of the general fund. And so then when we got on council, a year, myself and Councilmember Sneddon and Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, I think it was that first year that we were on there, and what happened was that was when the Tahigas Resource Recovery Project came online. And so that was a major increase to pay for that. And at the same time, that was over a 10% increase, we had to do the additional 3% or so, if I'm recalling it correctly. So we had a 14% increase that year. And that's what we're trying to avoid by making these capital investments in the infrastructure. And so in this last is, in terms of the reserves, you know, I've been a strong proponent of maintaining the reserves, but at the same time, I appreciate Councilmember Sneddon, Councilmember Harmon, who has consistently raised that on a number of times, and our Water Commission dealing with that. And the request today is to get information on what that would be, because we can't make an informed decision without that information. So I'm supportive of getting that and also looking at the 360 of it. So if we were to reduce it, how does that affect our bond rating? Does it, so that we can make a truly informed decision, if that's somewhere we want to go, over these next couple of years at least, to do impacts? And then, since we did hear this once today, it was on Finance, I'm not going to change my quote. I'm going to have you hear it again. And so I am supportive. I cannot support option three, cannot support option one, which leaves me, like that 1970's Steelers Wheel song, "Stuck in the Middle With You." And I've been advised by our Public Works Director that I need to clarify that I am not making any reference to clowns to the left and me are jokers to the right. I'm just stuck in the middle with you. Thank you.
So nothing further to add, really. I'm...I guess I'm hesitant about choices that don't just go into the reserves, but in this case, with everybody focusing on option two, you're further going into the reserves. So you're already going into the reserves. You're making a commitment to do that. So if that's something to pursue and bring back based on what you're hearing, key for me would be seeing exactly what the bang-for-the-buck is on rate versus the amount of further incursion into the reserves. And then also talking about what your worst-case scenario game plan fallback would be if you reverse the reserves, assuming you were going to get an SRF fund financing for a project and didn't, and then where would that money come from for a project that had to be done in a timely manner? So what does that consequence look like to you in the real world also? Not just that'll be the next council's problem to deal with down the road, our decision. I too like options two and two. One of the...well, you know I have all my favorite charts still, but one of them has always been that cloud of main failure and where that incline line goes to get above that cloud out into the future. And I continue to support that line being as high as possible. We're at 2% now, right? Yeah, and I think that one is like kind of an iffy top of the cloud eventually, you know, but the next lineup clearly takes you above the cloud, and the bottom two lines mean you never catch up, ever. And so, you know, it was a great set of slides and narrative today on just how damaging single-main blowout events are financially outside of that whole structure of planned replacement miles per year. So I like the options that continue to pursue normal operating capital costs while asking for more money and while getting a little way into the reserves. And I'll be happy to go down that path with my peers, but want to really look at that closely. And again, what I'll really be interested in hearing from you with, if that doesn't pan out on a particular project, then where do the funds come from when you put yourself in that position? Are you expecting as part of the motion to hear option selections, or does that come later? Do you just need to hear what's in the staff report as far as a motion?
I think we've...just what's in the staff report, I'm hearing, summarize here, I'm hearing support for options two for water, option two for wastewater. I'm hearing support with the Water Commission that we just leave our fixed fee for now, but do come back and have further conversation about that, particularly as it relates to an affordability discussion. And then the last one was maintaining the current class of prioritization of customers and water, so that ranking that we've been carrying for a while, continue to maintain that.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll look for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to move staff...
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation, option two, right?
And a second from Councilmember Sneddon. And I would think we'll just do it the old-fashioned way again, please.
Yes, so this is a motion by Councilmember Alhun Gutierrez, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, for the staff recommendation with option two. And we'll take a vote.
Okay. Any comments, final comments to the motions? Okay.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Alhun Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Aye.
And that's unanimous with Mayor Rouse absent.
Okay, and then we will take a short 10-minute break for our interpreters working away downstairs and be back at 4:30 with item 14. I'll call the meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, will you read item 14 for us, please?
Certainly. Item 14, monthly update on State Street interim operations.
And Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Jordan, councilmembers. My name is Sarah Clark. I'm the city's Public Works Downtown Team Manager, and I am here with your monthly update on State Street interim operations, although we haven't actually been here since December, so it's been a little bit more than a month. So to get started, I'm just going to run through sort of the history of council's direction on these issues. So back on September 26th, council directed staff to reprioritize the State Street pressure wash schedule, introduce shuttle service on State Street, implement temporary bike lanes on State Street, and reestablish the pre-existing drop-off and pickup zone at the Granada Theater. And that was also when council directed staff to come to you once a month with interim operations updates, so that you can have a greater hand in directing pilot activities during this time. So on October 31st, that was our first update to council, we reported back on those items, and council reaffirmed their support for the Granada drop-off zone, and also authorized $55,000 from the general fund to strike the temporary bike lanes. So after that, we came back on December 5th. That was the next update. In the interim, we did work on the pressure washing schedule. We also began implementation of the bike lanes and implemented the one-way vehicle configuration on the 1,200 block of State Street that enables the passenger drop-off at the Granada. So following those activities, and so at our last check-in with you, you directed us to create an accessible passenger drop-off zone at the Granada Theater, to establish a fire lane on the zero block of West Victoria Street, and you also requested that we examine the configuration of the 1,300 block of State Street for any safety issues that may be present there. So I'm going to go ahead through each of those directives and give you a status update on those. First off, the ones that we've completed at this point, we reprioritized the State Street pressure wash schedule back in November, and so that's been in place. To refresh your memory, that means that the lower blocks, so basically from the 600 block down to the State Street underpass and including the State Street underpass, which tend to have heavier traffic and become more soiled, now are pressure washed each twice a week, whereas the upper blocks are pressure washed once every other week. We also did reestablish that drop-off and pickup zone at the Granada Theater. So those two items are complete. So now on to the outstanding items. The shuttle service remains a priority, particularly one that prioritizes accessibility during the procurement process. At this point, we are targeting an RFP release by the end of quarter one. Unfortunately, due to staffing issues, this has gotten a bit delayed, but we are continuing to work towards that with the hope of having something in place later this year. Moving on to State Street and the bike lanes on State Street, as I noted, installation of the temporary bike lanes was completed in December of 2023. The initial direction included placement of vertical elements along a few of the blocks in order to create a sense of side friction, which would naturally slow the bicycle traffic. So we have met with the HLC Working Group to develop a plan for those vertical elements. Right now, staff are looking at options for sourcing some different items that might be used for those. We'll go back to HLC once we have those items in place and hopefully be able to roll that out on at least one of the blocks. And then the Access Advisory Committee Working Group will also be checking back in with them to see if they have any comment on that. So we wanted to see how those bike lanes were working, since the intent was to separate users, try to create some separation between bicycles and pedestrians, to sort of increase the feeling of safety and orderliness in the roadway. So back in January, for a period of three days, so Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, January 13th through 15th, we placed cameras on three blocks, the 500 block, the 900 block, and the 1,200 block, to collect survey data, basically, so that we could monitor the activity there and determine how many people were using the facilities and what kinds of users, and whether they were in the bike lanes or not in the bike lanes, and sort of see how effective those were. So we ended up, just because of time constraints, we only coded two hours of video each day. So those are sort of the peak hours. We looked at 4:00 to 6:00 PM, which is when we noticed usually the highest amounts of traffic. So during that time, just for those two-hour windows on those three days, we had a total of 2,108 road users that were recorded on the 500 block. That broke down to 1,140 bikes, 841 pedestrians, and 127 other vehicles, whether they're skateboards, roller skates, one-wheels, those sorts of things. I will note that this is the roadway only, this is not the sidewalk, so this doesn't include any pedestrians or other that may have been on the sidewalk. We were really focused on the roadway and the bicycle lanes. So the 900 block had a little bit of a higher volume of bicycles, with 1,379 bikes, 588 pedestrians, 123 other, and for a total of 2,090 road users that were logged during that time. And then up on the 1,200 block, we logged 1,308 total road users at that time, with a breakdown of 929 bikes, 308 peds, 71 other, and 46 cars. So over the three days for that six-hour period, basically, or the six total hours that we surveyed, we observed 46 vehicles using the vehicle lane on the 1,200 block. So moving on to bike lane utilization, we counted how many bikes were in the bike lane, how many of those other rolling implements were in the bike lane, and how many peds were in the bike lane. And then we also did vehicle lanes, added vehicle lanes onto that for the 1,200 block. And what we found was very encouraging. Even without the presence of physical separation, a large majority of users, or bike users, are riding in the place that they're supposed to be riding. They're riding in the bike lane. So on the 500 block, 89% of cyclists were in the bike lane. On the 900 block, you'll notice there's these numbers in parentheses. It's a little bit different, because for a portion of the survey, I believe on Saturday, the so-called wheelie kids were present on this block, and so they were doing some stunt riding, including in the bike lane, and so that may have caused people to swerve and move outside of the bike lane. So the data in the parentheses is with those days removed, or that period of time removed. So 74% when you don't have the wheelie kids present. And then on the 1,200 block, we broke it down for bikes in the bike lane, which was 58%. Other in the bike lane, 69% of other types of vehicles were in the, non-motorized vehicles were in the bike lane. 19% of pedestrians used the bike lanes. But then bikes are also allowed to go in the vehicle lane, and so another 38%, 39% of bicycles were in the vehicle lane. 19% of pedestrians were walking in the vehicle lane, which is not really ideal, given that is open to traffic. But taken in total, if you look at the number of bikes that were in the correct place, either the vehicle lane or the bicycle lane, it's almost 100%, so 97%. So really, even without the, again, physical separation, we are seeing good compliance with the bike lane. And just anecdotally, we've gotten a lot of comments from the community indicating that it does feel better on the street with the bike lanes in place. So so far, we would consider that a fairly successful pilot program. I'd also point out something interesting, which is that the three blocks were chosen on purpose, the 1,200 block, obviously because we have the new vehicle lane there, the 900 block because it's wide open. We don't have any outdoor business facilities there, so there's really nothing to kind of narrow that street down. And then the 500 block, where we have the highest concentration of outdoor business facilities. And we did note that the 500 block showed higher compliance than the 900 block, which does sort of confirm our suspicions that on, given a narrower travel way, the bikes will be more likely to use and to stay in the bike lane, whereas when it's just wide open on the sides, there's not as much incentive to stay in the lane and to not swerve out into the areas that are meant more for pedestrians. So moving on to the Granada drop-off, so we... Moving on to the Granada drop-off, so we met on-site with Granada Theater management to discuss the options for temporarily accommodating accessible drop-off there. They have submitted some design possibilities for, excuse me, for temporary ramps that are under review with our city engineer. We are also evaluating design options for permanent accessible passenger loading zones there. That's obviously going to be a much larger capital improvement project. Once we've landed on a temporary ramp design, we will review that with the Access Advisory Committee before moving forward with implementing that. But I did want to call your attention to some difficulties that we've also been having on the 1,200 block. So this photo was taken, I believe, about a month ago. It was on a weekend in the evening by one of our downtown ambassadors. And what you see here is, I believe there's a total of approximately seven passenger vans or buses that are parked illegally on the 1,200 block, some of them blocking the vehicle lane on the right, and then some of them have crossed over into the closed portion of the roadway and are parked in the bike lane. So this is sort of an ongoing concern. We did discuss this with Granada Theater Management, in particular, this incident. But even beyond that, we are noticing work trucks, things like that during the day, will pull over and drive across the bike lanes, or even drive in the bike lanes, and then park on the other side. And so that is something that we are going to have to figure out, particularly as we're looking forward into the master plan, if there are any designs that have, you know, one-way vehicle traffic or something similar like this. We're gonna need to determine what are the best ways that we can try to keep drivers in the lane where they're supposed to be. We're also gonna need to accommodate loading activities, because as you can see here, vehicles will stop regardless of whether it is legal to stop, regardless of whether there is a place to stop that is out of the way of traffic. And so in order for us to keep traffic moving safely, it's best to design for that and to accommodate that in our designs. Other challenges with this block, you know, as you can sort of see here, the sidewalk does get very crowded before and after showtimes, and while it's nice to have, you know, good crowds of people downtown, it does cause people to spill out, pedestrians to spill out into the vehicle lane. Again, now that that lane is open to traffic, it's not ideal to have both the cars and the vehicles mixing in that lane. And so this is something that we're gonna have to keep an eye on and learn from as we go forward. So moving on to the fire lane on the zero block of West Victoria, we will be reintroducing two-way traffic, which is going to, in order to implement the 20-foot-wide fire lane. That's gonna require parklets to be reduced to nine feet wide, plus then another two foot, two feet for a traffic safety barrier. Nine feet is about what the parklets on State Street have and with, so these will really just be coming kind of into line with the other outdoor business facilities that we do have in the promenade pilot area. And at this point, the outdoor business facility that was in front of the public market was voluntarily removed, so that's no longer there. So our initial goal was to implement this mid-March after following the Film Festival. However, because we were unable to meet with you back in January, we're gonna push that out a bit, a little bit, and look towards the beginning of May. So we've already begun outreach to the businesses on that block, we've met with them, and we'll be speaking with them again, making sure that they are prepared for when the time comes. Now, moving on to the 1,300 block, this is the block that we were asked to take a look at and determine whether there were changes to that configuration that were needed as well. So upon evaluating that block, the concern there is we see a lot of what are called contra-flow bicycle movements. So the traffic lane is one-way northbound, but we have cyclists that are going southbound, and they're going southbound right behind the vehicles that are parked head-in. And so because of that movement, there's a high possibility or high risk of collisions with vehicles backing out into the cyclists, they may not be looking for them to be coming, moving southbound. So in order to resolve that, the traffic engineer and the city engineer, along with the fire marshal and the assistant fire chief took a look at the design, and they came up with a revised configuration. Now, under Title 31, the city administrator has the authority to direct the reconfiguration or modification of traffic patterns on these blocks. And so prior to her retirement, the city administrator, back in December, signed a memo directing staff to implement a revised configuration that would move the bike lane along the western curb, so in front of the Arlington, provide a two-way bicycle lane there that would be protected by angled parking, and then a two-way northbound and southbound traffic lanes. So that particular configuration requires the removal of the two parklets that are on that street right now, so that's Opal and Carlitos. So once that direction was given, we began the process of reaching out to the businesses on that block. Through those discussions, we met with them on-site, the traffic engineer and the city engineer met and discussed what other possibilities might be. There was an alternative configuration that was developed, however, after evaluating both configurations with the priority being placed on safety, the city administrator has determined that we should move forward with the original configuration. So here's a look at that. Again, there's two-way traffic along the eastern side of the street, so northbound and southbound lanes. Then we have a two-way protected bike lane along the western curb line. We have 26 angled parking spaces, again, the removal of those two parklets. And this is also gonna require some changes to the gutter in order to create an appropriate surface for the bicycles to travel on, particularly the sewer drain grates that are gonna have to be refabricated. So that's all I have for my presentation. Right now, I want to hand it off to, we've got the chair of the Historic Landmarks Commission, Anthony Grumbine is here for comment, and we'll follow that with James Marston from the Access Advisory Committee.
Mr. Grumbine, welcome.
Hey, everyone. Thanks. So I guess in terms of the comments, we've been working with staff, it's been a couple months now, but we worked with staff and in discussions for the bicycle dividers and some of those things. We haven't commented at all on or seen or discussed the recent, the whole Arlington thing, so yeah. So that's where we've seen everything else and worked with them on the other portions. So that's just sort of the up-to-date, yeah, for the interim stuff, what we've been doing.
Okay.
There you go. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
If you have time, stick around. I'm sure we'll have questions.
Yeah, I'll stick around for a little bit.
Okay. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Jordan, and council members. Ms. Clark, I have a question. Why did you do your survey on the bike at 4:00 PM to 6:00, which is after sunset?
Sure, Chair Marston. So four to six is kind of around dusk, but that's when we observe the highest volume of bicycles and pedestrians on State Street. So in order to get, to observe that during the most crowded conditions, when it's most important for the, each of the users to be using the appropriate lane, that's when we decided to take the counts.
Thanks. I've got a few comments here that I'm gonna get rid of real quick. Everybody seems to be okay with the bike lanes. I've had a few comments from disabled people who don't like them in the center, but they're there, you've spent the money to paint them in there, so maybe we can work with that when we have the master plan. But I'm okay with the bike lanes. The zero block of West Victoria, I think it's a very good plan to get rid of, or shrink down the parklets. I'm glad that the public market got rid of theirs, so the fire trucks can get in and out there, so no problem with that. I do have two things I want to make sure that we understand as a council and citizens here. We've been talking since September, I think, talked about establishing a shuttle. We still don't have one, and what's not being said is, from what I understand, it's only gonna be in the summertime, paid for by MTD, and a very, very stripped-down schedule. No one knows where it's gonna go, but I'll bet you it won't go to Amtrak or to the waterfront. So if it's not a regular schedule that people can trust, then it's not gonna be used very much, and it's only gonna go on Chapala and Anacapa. It's not gonna replace what you guys unilaterally canceled in 2020 when they had the MTD shuttle, which many people relied upon. And I, if you didn't drive or live downtown and don't want to have a car, you'd have to understand how hard it is to shop and do your errands and doctor's appointments without any kind of shuttle transfer or transit at all. There's no link between the MTD station all the way down to the waterfront, to the Amtrak station. You have lots of people wanting to go to the Amtrak, you have a lot of students from the two universities that come down to the transit center, they have to walk a mile with their suitcases to transit, there's no way to get to the zoos or the harbor. It's just been ridiculous, and I think we need to have full-time shuttle now, as far as you can do that. So. That contract, like I said, it was unilaterally canceled in 2020, and then most community members want full-time service and not just this micro-shuttle that keeps being talked about. And the AAC would like to be able to review what we're gonna ask for in this micro-shuttle. I noticed it wasn't brought up today. Ms. Clark, are you still gonna work on micro-shuttles, right?
Yes, the, right now, we're currently working on developing a request for proposals.
So two major things that I, please ask the council to make sure this is done in the RFP. You've always talked about that these should be accessible, but no one's put the word "all vehicles" should be accessible. We can't just have part of them being accessible. I know that a couple months ago, you had information from San Diego's little micro-shuttles, and only one out of four was accessible. So number one, please make sure you ask that all vehicles be accessible, which is required. And number two, think about people who have one person in a wheelchair, a spouse, and at least one child. Many of these little vehicles, you can't have the whole family together, so you've gotta break up your family. If you got a two-year-old, does mom go with the two-year-old, or does mom stay with her husband who needs the help and the kid has to walk at two years old? We have to have some kind of minimum amount of chairs that are available on these micro-shuttles. So if you can make sure that we have all are to be accessible, and there must be some kind of minimum seating so that you don't break up families and tourists and stuff. Okay, and on the Granada drop-off, again, it's been months that we've talked about reviewing plans. I think it's very easy, I think Ms. Clark agrees, that all you need to do is do a ramp that's parallel to the curb. It doesn't stick out into the street, it's just, you come out, you take a 90-degree turn, and you go down the slope. And I, for the life of me, I can't figure out why we can't just review the plan and have one. And that's just for the temporary one. I know Mr. DeMore is working on plans for the accessible shuttle, or the accessible drop-off. Okay, the 1,300 block has many, many code violations and safety issues. Let me give you a little history, first of all. Before the pandemic, there was a nice blue curb parking spot, accessible parking spot, right next to Arlington Theater and Opals. When they decided to have parklets, the rules said no red zones and no blue zones will be used for parklets. Sounds good, right? But the next thing we know, they've covered up the blue zone by Opal and let them put a parklet in there. So then they wouldn't put a blue curb, a blue zone across the street on Arlington Street. But the crown of the street is so steep there that a van with a side ramp couldn't even hit the sidewalks, so it's totally useless. So now there's no place to drop off for the Arlington, not just for wheelchair users, but any kind of drop-off, because the bike lanes are there. So you don't have a blue curb anymore at the west side, you don't have any place to drop off, and if you use the blue curb on the east side, you've then got to cross the street. So that's pretty bad. But let's look at the real problems that happened with this. Could you put the diagram up for me? Okay, there is a three-foot walkway on the south side, I'm sorry, the west side of the angled parking. That should be four feet, so there's no safe path of travel to get from these diagonal parking spots to the crosswalks, which are the hatched things on either side. The only way to get there is to follow on this three-foot pathway, which is not wide enough. There's also no detectable warnings there to let low-vision people know they're stepping out into either a traffic lane or to the bike lane. And then you also have the fact that the far right, there's a stall for a van, which has code compliant, non-compliant measurements, and that van space sticks into the bicycle lane. So this really has to be re-engineered. Maybe the simple thing would be to make the bike lanes narrower there, but right now, that does not pass code compliance, and I've heard from two different certified access specialists that they have many problems with the safety issues there. And my question is, why couldn't we just have those diagonal parking be on the west side of the street and have the bike lanes in the center like they are on other streets? I'm not sure why they put them in the middle, but it just seems like very dangerous, because everybody who parks there has to either cross to the east or cross to the west with no safe crossing. I think I'll let you go on that, but please try to get this RFP for the micro-shuttle to say all vehicles, and there must be a minimum number of seating, because you don't know what it'd be like to have a person in a wheelchair, their spouse, and a couple kids, and all of a sudden you have to break up your family just to go up and down State Street. And I hope we can take a better look at this and decide how to make it more accessible and safe, because right now, there's a lot of danger there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Marston. Questions from council members? Alejandro Gutierrez.
Could staff answer the question about how to access, if somebody parks, well, the question that was raised, this last question that was raised? I'm not gonna try to explain it.
Are you asking Derek?
Yeah, Derek, yeah. Thank you for the question, sir.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. The hatched areas at either end of the block provide direct access into the adjacent crosswalks, and then from the adjacent crosswalks to the corner access ramps. So there is a path of travel. The spaces that are shown here meet PROEG, which is the Public Right-of-Way ADA Guidelines. This is an unconventional design in terms of having the angle parking floating out in the street versus something that is up against the curb, which is a more standard configuration. So from that perspective, this isn't something that people would be used to.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Nen?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think I'll start my first question. Well, first of all, I just want to say how incredibly adaptable and open-minded staff have been throughout all of this pilot season programs, but my first question is on Slide 11. It's the one in front of the Granada with the vehicles that are, yeah, it's this one. Are, do you know who's, I don't know if you can answer this here, but like, are these vehicles associated with activity at the Granada?
Mayor Protem, Jordan, Councilmember Snen, yes, in this case, these vehicles are waiting to pick up patrons following a show. It's my understanding that this show... It's my understanding that this show, there was an encore, so it went a little bit later. So, you know, rather than finding another area to stage, all the vehicles just parked on the block and waited.
Thank you. I'll reserve my comments about that for the comment period, but wow. Well, I'll save my comments for that one. And then on the 1300 block, could we see Slide 14 again? And I think I am understanding with Mr. Marston's comments, it's not just the accessibility parking space, but for those in the mid-block, how do you then get to the crosswalk? Do you walk in the bike lane or across traffic?
Mayor Protem, Jordan, Councilmember Sneddon, we would anticipate that from the angled parking spaces, pedestrians would cross the two-way bike lane to the sidewalk.
Over to the sidewalk, okay. And then, in this configuration, is there a blue curb accessible drop-off in front of the Arlington?
We struggled with that. There is space between the two crosswalks where those dots are, those are supposed to be potted plants, that a vehicle could pull into and then use the crosswalk to get to the access ramp and onto the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
So, there is a loading space, but again, it's unconventional design.
Got it. And I do appreciate the creativity. But I'm going to show my hand right now that I think this plan is overly complicated for, and I'll save that for comments, too, but that was the question about that is, so this would sort of eliminate any drop-off right in front of the Arlington?
Councilmember Sneddon, there is space for a drop-off, like I said, between those pots, like kind of in between.
Can the cursor maybe?
Yeah, right in there.
Oh, okay. Actually, I'm very happy you're pointing that out, because that is, one of my proposed solutions for Granada is using that type of area for a drop-off. Okay.
If I just could add, one of the benefits that collectively we talked about with a configuration like this is the bike lane is completely separated from traffic. So, what you saw in that photograph for the 1200 block in front of the Granada, that couldn't happen like that on this block, just because of the separation between the traffic and the bikes. So, that's one benefit that we saw with this configuration.
Okay. And then I have a question, just to my mind, it is too complicated, and it sort of makes the center of the street a parking lot. And I have questions maybe for HLC about whether that visually sort of disrupts the sightlines to the Arlington or not, if the middle of the street's a parking lot, but I'll hold that question. If this street reverted back to being parallel parking, two bike lanes on either side of the road, would that be enough of a reconfiguration that then, and this might be a question for legal, would that be enough of a reconfiguration that then it would be possible to, for any businesses to apply for our citywide parklet program and then go through design review and go through consideration? If we reverted the street back to pre-pandemic configuration, to my mind, that's enough of a change, that then it would be back to the citywide parklet program?
Honorable Mayor members of the council, the answer is really no. The citywide program applies in every other area of the city except the promenade, the 000 block of West Victoria, and the 1300 block. In order to change that, you'd have to amend Title 31.
Okay, so, within Title 31, could we, with the City Administrator's Authority, revert it back to a street and then have, could we decide that then the citywide parklet program is the route for businesses if they wanted to have a parklet on the regular street?
Let me answer the question a little bit differently. Under Title 31, the city administrator could, as part of the pilot program, put the street back to the way it was. In order to do that, we would first need to remove the parklets. The new parklets that would come back would not be parklets. They're outdoor business facilities within Title, under Title 31, and they would need to comply with the new requirements that are in the guidelines. So they would have to comply with all of the requirements as a new facility under Title 31.
That answers my question. So that is a route, or is an option, if we wanted to consider that, or with the City Administrator's Authority, we wanted to consider that, that this could be reverted to its pre-pandemic configuration, and we could ask that the new citywide parklet program apply?
The, no. I answered that before. The citywide parklet program is different than the outdoor business facility program. Under Title 31, you can have outdoor business facilities. Their location and the configuration of those are subject to the design guidelines and, what do we call it, the guidelines for the outdoor?
Design requirements, yeah. There are requirements for operating an outdoor business facility on State Street.
Those have already been adopted. They are in existence. What Title 31 says is that if you put a new business facility within this area, which includes the 1300 block, it has to comply with those new design requirements for business facilities on State Street. That's different from parklets, but...
But it would be the new ones, because we had some, we had some questions about existing, like rooftop structures and different things about structures. But if there's a reconfiguration of the street, it would be in the City Administrator's Authority to then make a reconfiguration of the parklets there.
They would be allowed, the parklets would be allowed. The difference is that it would be a new parklet, and it's subject to all of the criteria that are in the business, in the guidelines, I'm just going to call them the guidelines, including the aesthetic guidelines.
Yes, that's what I'm going for.
Yeah, the existing don't have to comply with the aesthetic. The new, which this would be, would have to comply with the aesthetic requirements.
Okay, I want to ask it one more time, just so I'm clear.
Yeah.
I think you're being clear, but I'm not sure I understand. If we were to revert the street back to pre-pandemic configuration, we could, the City Administrator's Authority, could then have new parklets that would need to comply under our new Title 31 guidelines?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. I have a couple of other questions, but just to follow up on that, those new guidelines, would they be subject to K-Rail, like the other ones throughout the city?
Honorable Mayor members of the council, yes.
Okay, so if we went down that path, you'd have to have K-Rail basically right in front of the Arlington? Or close enough, if it was in the same spot as one of the current parklets?
The ordinance states that traffic safety barriers are required in, on those outdoor business facilities as determined by the city engineer and the traffic engineer. So, that's the requirement.
So in all likelihood, we would be, K-Rail would be under consideration right in front of the Arlington? Basically, the traffic engineer would make that determination, but it's a possibility if we went down that path.
The last time we talked about this in front of Arlington, and I'll let traffic engineer speak, on the 1200 block, oh, excuse me, on the 1300 block, yes, you would have to determine whether or not it's required.
Thank you for that. So, since we're still on this, I just have a question on the, on this design configuration that's being proposed with the angled parking. Why isn't it, why do we come to this rather than putting it up against the curb like Mr. Marston requested? What's the advantages or disadvantages?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Friedman, as I mentioned, one of the benefits is it provides a completely separated area from loading activities, so there is that safety separation. It does provide direct access to the new bike facility on Soul Street, so there is a nice connection there. The parking supply is an advantage, because it does provide, was it 26 parking spaces? So that's an advantage as well.
Excuse me, apologize. Just to add to that, keep in mind that the reason that we're looking at this reconfiguration is the potential for conflict from vehicles backing out of parking spaces into cyclists who are traveling southbound, so placing the bike lane, in this case, behind the angled parking stalls would not alleviate that.
Makes, that makes sense. And have we, I was just recently up in Pismo Beach, and you said it's unconventional, but in Pismo Beach, there's a few streets where they actually have something similar to this, where they had the angled parking in the center of the street. Have we, are you familiar with that, and have you looked at Pismo? It's slightly different than this, but it is angled parking in the middle of the street.
Yeah, just on aerial photographs, I haven't seen it in person.
So we are aware of that, and we can look at that as stuff to analyze on this. Okay. Just my last series of questions, if you could pull up Slide 6. So I had a question about, this is for micro transit, is that right, the RFP?
Yes, Councilmember Friedman, excuse me, Councilmember Friedman through Mayor Protem Jordan, yes. So we were just talking, in terms of the RFP, that would be the micro transit. MTD is still pursuing a circulator shuttle for the summer, which would be the full-size bus as shown here, so the previous shuttles that we had on State Street. And as Chair Marston mentioned, those would be running up and down Chapala and Anacapa. I don't have further details about the route at this point, but I do know that they are still continuing to pursue that.
That's separate from this RFP. That is maybe connect, that might have the ability to connect down to the waterfront and everything else.
That's, yes, that's correct. The RFP would be for a micro transit option that could fit on State Street without having to reopen it to vehicles. So if we had a bus like this running up and down State Street, given the infrastructure that we currently have, we would have to open the whole street back up to vehicles, and that's something that, in previous consideration, councils decided that they were not a favor. And so, hence the direction to look at a micro option, something that's small and could fit on the street while it's still close to vehicles.
Have we identified any, I'm speaking specifically now to the RFP and the potential to implement it. So have we identified, one, any funding sources for the micro shuttle, and do we have a range of what it would cost? I know it would be just an estimate, but is it $10,000, $100,000, a million dollars?
Councilmember Friedman through Councilmember Jordan, the, we don't yet have a funding source based on what other cities have paid. There is a range of options. It would really depend on the intensity of the service that we were looking to use. When we compared, for example, to San Diego and Pacific Beach, there's runs about $500,000. So, you know, we could scale that down, or we could scale that up. There are also options to implement a fare, which would offset a portion of the cost. There would also be options, the way that some of these companies work in other cities is that they have advertising on them, and that offsets a portion of the cost as well. I don't know whether this particular city would be interested in that, but there are, those are some other options that other cities have pursued.
So we don't have funding right now for something that could potentially be in the ballpark of half a million, give or take. I mean, there's other options. It could be less, it could be more, but we got a plan for it. So then, so if we don't have the funding identified, we put out the RFP, and then we start getting proposals, how long are those proposals good for until we would have to recirculate the RFP?
Councilmember Friedman through the Mayor Protem, I apologize, I don't know offhand how long those would be valid.
But at some point, though, we would have to recirculate it, because this is where my question is, is if we don't have the funding identified, we do an RFP, and we get proposals, but we can't fund it, it just sits there. And then eventually, at some point, would, their costs might change or not. So we, if we commit to going down that, we get the proposals, we would have to, at some point, fund it.
Mayor Protem, Jordan, Councilmember Friedman, we are no, under no obligation to enter into a contract once we've issued the RFP. It may be that we get responses and we find that it is not feasible for financial reasons or not feasible for other reasons, or perhaps we don't get any responses based on the parameters that we specify in the RFP. So, that would be a first step in terms of us getting information about the availability and the cost of services. Following that, you know, there would certainly be, we would need to identify a funding source if we did want to proceed.
But, yeah, so I understand, we wouldn't be obligated to fund it, but the whole point of going through this is to try to fund something like that. So if we got RFPs, we would want to do that. So, okay, thank you.
Through the mayor and Councilmember Friedman, I would just like to piggyback on to what Ms. Clark said, that once we receive the RFP, would be the opportunity for us to determine what the funding source would be. Obviously, at that point, we would need to determine what that funding source would be before we went further with a contract. So, you actually make a very good point, that we would then have to determine, how are we going to fund this, and if we're going to fund it? So that would be a budget discussion.
Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'd like to start with the 1300 block, if I may, and I, I'm sorry to bring up this alternative proposal, but I don't quite know how to go through my questions without being explicit about it. So, obviously, I reviewed the alternative proposal, which is for parallel parking, retaining 23 parking spaces rather than the 26 that's being proposed with the angled parking. And I guess, I heard in the report that this alternative parallel proposal is considered less safe, but then when the question was asked, what are the advantages for this configuration, it didn't seem that safety was really the number-one advantage. It was more like retaining the extra parking, the extra three parking spaces, having some extra loading zone. I guess my question is, and I'll say frankly, I strongly preferred the parallel configuration, so I'm wondering, like, what are the actual safety implications that took this proposal off the table for us? And also, if you could speak specifically to, like, our consideration of people walking from their cars through the bike lane, like, that seems like a safety issue to me as well. So anyway, thank you.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Harmon.
Oh, Slide 17. Thank you.
Do we not have extra slides? It's very hidden.
I apologize, I don't think that we have that one. Sorry. It's Attachment 2 of January 30th Council Report. There it is, yeah.
Through the mayor, if I could just make a comment on that, too. It's Alternative 2, which was previously, in the prior presentation, was not presented to the City Administrator's Office. That is why it was not presented. You know, under Title 31, the city administrator has the authority to make, to consider the alternative traffic configurations on the 1300 block. Alternative 2 was not presented to the City Administrator's Office. City administrator approved the alternative that's presented to you tonight. That alter, other alternative was not presented to the City Administrator's Office. And, you know, so...
Could we request that it be presented?
You could request, you could request that.
Okay.
Yes, certainly. We would then consider that.
Okay.
My consideration of the alternative of December 13 was based upon meeting with the police chief, meeting with the fire marshal, and going through that consideration. That is why I... That is why I pursued and concurred with the city administrator's determination on December 18. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, I guess then I'm asking for that information. What is it that led you or our staff not to present this option? Because to me, it is, it is almost startlingly less complicated. Seems to retain some of the elements that I think are most beloved about this block. But I, you know, if there are major implications for safety, I would like to know what those are, and I haven't heard those tonight. So I'm not quite sure where to go from here. Maybe we can be filled in on what those are, or maybe the answer is just to request that it gets presented and comes back to us. But I, I would like to know more about this alternative before pursuing the others. So I leave it to you all.
Yeah, and thank you for that. And I, you know, I would like to have the police chief, she could come comment on that. But I think that the concern that, the reasons that I thought that the first alternative was good is because we're putting two-way traffic back on to the 1300 block. We've also got two-way bicycle traffic on the 1300 block. We've got pedestrians on that. So we've, we have a lot going on there. And with this, with the first alternative, we don't have the confusion with the parklets on that, on that anymore. So we're removing the blocked vision, the blocked visuals created by the parklets. So we're just having the angled parking, the two-way traffic, there's separation in that. And I'm obviously not an expert here, but we're, we're clear lines here of demarcation between that activity.
Other than getting out of your car.
Right, other than, other than that, that, right? Right, right. And then, you know, with the, with the Alternative 2, there, there's confusion about, unless the parklets are fully removed, fully removed, and then come back, as Mr. Henske was describing, and then, under what other, under either any alternative, they would have to be fully removed, and then come back and apply as new parklets under Title 31. Then they would have to comply with the new guidelines if, if whatever configuration is approved allows them. That's the only way that parklets could, could be reconsidered under Title 31.
Can, if I could get some answers, that would be super...
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. Councilmember Harmon. So interim city administrator connect really summarized where our concerns lie. And this was the work of staff, you know, our assistant police chief, the fire marshal, going out, walking it, looking at it in conjunction with city staff. The opportunity to create a separate bike lane that is not behind the vehicles is, first of all, the safest way, in our opinion, where you're not having the cars back out into not just traffic, but biking, backing out into the bike lane. I understand we do that commonly throughout our city. But creating that, that separate space, not having, because of the theater, the issues that we're having in the 1200 block. If you have parallel parking, you are going to have double parking. So people are going to stop in that bike lane to do drop-off. We're going to recreate the issues that we have already seen in the 1200 block. So we're trying to learn from what has happened in the 1200 block, and part of that is what we're already seeing. So if we have parallel parking and then a bike lane, you are going to have people dropping off for the theater, where they are simply stopping, double parking in the bike lane, causing more issues than we have now. The parklets, I will tell you, create a significant safety concern right now to go to a parallel parking because of pulling in and out and around, because now you're trying to see around the parklet, the bike lane, and figure out what's in traffic. So that's the other piece of it. Is, now, talking tonight, we're talking that those would have to be completely removed with the other plan, but if they were to go back, it creates a significant safety concern because of the visibility and being able to view not just what is next to you, but around you and seeing around those parklets. It's a significant concern in terms of sight and vision.
So what I'm hearing, being said repeatedly, is there's concern about parallel parking, backing out into the bike lane. But when you leave your parallel parking space, you're not going backwards, you're going forwards.
But you're coming in, but you're, you could be backing, you could be pulling. People do all sorts of interesting things when it comes to the parallel parking piece. But like I said, the other piece is what we've already seen, because of the theater happening in the 1200 block, is you're going to see folks double parking in the bike lane if there's parallel parking. They're, they're not going to be able to find a place to park, so they're going to make their own drop-off section. So now you're going to have vehicles parked, you're going to have parked, well, they'd have to be removed based on what was just said, but you're going to have vehicles, then you'll have the bike lane. And now you're going to have cars stopping for the theater in the, in the bike lane. Now you're going to have people getting out into traffic, walking through the parallel parked cars. There's just, there's a whole lot more safety issues under the second configuration, in our opinion, than the first. And we're just looking at this from a public safety perspective, is, you know, your, your bike lanes are not zooming by, you know, 100, 100 bikes at a time. Like, you're not going to have a bike, you know, in there at all times. So you're actually creating a better buffer to get out your, your parallel park doors and to walk straightly onto the sidewalk, especially because you're going to have, just like Derek talked about, in terms of that opportunity to create a parallel park where those that, you know, need a special accessibility would have that within that parallel parking. Versus with the way that is, if you're parallel parking there, and you're trying to get out into that curb and then up onto the sidewalk, that's going to be very difficult for access with the parallel parking. So like I said, this was based on going out there, walking it, looking at the different configurations with the fire marshal, with the assistant chief. This was done a couple of times now. It was done when our former city administrator was here. It was done again with our current interim city administrator, and that's why the recommendation was for Option 1.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I admit, it's very counterintuitive to me.
It is, and that's why we went out, we looked at it, we talked about it, that, you know, and literally put plans out on the street. And this was a well thought-out process to discuss all the pros and cons of, of all of it, so.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. From a traffic engineering perspective, and then I'll turn it over to continue the line of questioning, if my colleagues have any on this. But I, I guess I'd like to get a better sense from a traffic engineering. We've heard from public safety, you really, really appreciate that. I still have this, not lingering, quite real concern about people getting in their car. I mean, I guess I understand you can stop and look for bikes, but I don't, I don't quite see how it's safer. I mean, from an engineering perspective, would we say, what I want someone to tell me is that it's 100% safer, it's not even close, because it just doesn't look that way to me. And so I continue to wonder about it, and I'd love to hear from an engineering perspective.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Harmon. I can't say it's 100% safer. The potential benefits with the separation are really good. But the thing about it being an unconventional design is there's more uncertainty as to how people are actually going to respond to the unconventional design. We're a little bit more confident in how what you're seeing on the screen now would perform. As the chief said, we're certain to get people double parking, but we've, we've have, we have a history of this configuration on this block. And so historically, we can say that the crash history is quite low on here. So we know what we're getting into with what you're seeing on the screen. The potential benefits with the first option that you saw are quite great, but we're just less certain that that's how it's going to turn out.
And are there any, thank you, that's very helpful. Are there any implications for backing out from angled parking into traffic? I seem to remember years ago, we had a conversation, maybe about angled parking at East Beach? Yeah. And one of the major concerns was the implications for backing out into traffic, which with the proposed alternative, if I'm correct, you have to do, right? And are we, so I assume that factored into the calculus of which is going to be safer?
Yeah, that's accurate. Bigger concern is when you're backing out into bike traffic. So with other alternatives that we were looking at, with the bikes having their own space, they're less likely to be backing out into that area. Modern cars, most of them have backup cameras, so, you know, the visibility of vehicles coming is quite good, but it's more difficult to see if there's backing out into cyclists.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez, if you want to go?
Just an additional question quickly, let me see. Oh, thank you. It was about, on a separate issue related to the bike lane utilization. It's great that it seems to be working effectively. The only question I had is, are we seeing an increase in speeds? Are bicycles going faster on the promenade because they have an allocated space? Or has that just not been a factor?
Mayor Protem Jordan, Councilmember Harmon, we have not collected any speed data. Anecdotally, I would say I have not observed people going especially faster, but when, if they were to be, they would be more likely to be in a lane with other cyclists who would be traveling at a higher speed than pedestrians. So that's where having that separation can be good, because you have more similar speed happening in the same place.
Let's ask the question again then.
Okay, thank you. I don't have to answer it now, but I had asked the question of Mr. Grunbein, or if there's an opinion, I know you can't speak for HLC, but about the aesthetics of making the center of the street a parking lot essentially in, in front of Arlington. And if you're not comfortable, you know, opining on that, that's fine, too. I just, I had asked the question.
Oh, I'm always comfortable opining. Even if I don't know the answer. No, so I say, I would say briefly, I think it seems like this is like the K rails or whatever, this seems like a good checks-off-the-box traffic solutions in general that is, is happening. And it also seems like it's a thing that forms our city. So it is, these are moves that are made, that in my opinion, should be made as a whole, as a holistic design. They shouldn't be made as, as an architect. I regularly work with engineers, it's a similar thing. You wouldn't design your, check off the boxes of my garage works and my circulation through my house works, therefore it's a done house, right? So there's a lot more of other engineering and other design that should go into it. So my general opinion, I'm sure that HLC feels the same way, is that we should be designing things as a holistic thing. Of course, transportation's important, of course, fire, police, everyone, all those things are all important, but they need to be worked out as a holistic design. So that's sort of, as an overarching thing.
I have a couple. So kind of central to this uneasiness with what you're presenting to tonight is, where did the phrase "examine the configuration" lead to two-way traffic on the 1300 block, rather than just one-way traffic going north to match the 1200 block? Mayor Protem Jordan, the operational concern was cyclists southbound not having a defined space in which to operate. So in the, on the 1200 block, they do? They do. On the 1300 block, they don't. But could they with a similar type of arra, that block is wider, right? The 1300 block than the 1200 block? So I guess I'm, I'm uneasy about the, the, not stretching to get to yes, but just finding no in a box that involves two-way vehicular lanes, two-way bicycle lanes, and the damage it does. And so my specific question is, why are we not, why did we not also look into a configuration that only had a northbound vehicular traffic lane on the 1300 block with two bicycle lanes? And possibly, without knowing the, I can't read small enough to read the wits, but possibly also then having parallel parking on each side of the street? Which is very close to the configuration that it used to be before, other than we're, we're only putting one traffic lane in, and we're using the other traffic, the other traffic lane that's not there to put in dedicated bike lanes. Does that make sense? Sort of. Speaking engineer to engineer? Yes. So I'll go back to the, the operational problem that we'd like to solve, and that's the southbound cyclists not having a defined space and operating in a space that's directly behind vehicles that are backing out of parking spaces. So that's, that's what we need to get rid of. One solution is to flip the parking and the bikes, so that the bikes are against the curb, and the parking is out in the street. And that's the first option that we looked at. In order to make that work with the street wits and everything, we had, instead of nose-in parking like we have now, we had to go to an angle. But once you do that, you're also creating enough space where you have enough space for two-way traffic. So from our perspective, too, it spreads traffic out more, it allows access onto West Victoria, which is also going to become two-way, just improves circulation in the area better. So that was option number one, as were, that was first presented. This alternative that was sketched up also has two-way traffic, also solves the bike circulation issue with being directly behind vehicles backing out, but it's just a different configuration. Kind of what's common among them is you're creating enough vehicle space with the fire lane that you have enough space for two-way traffic. So from our perspective, if you have enough space for two-way traffic, why not provide two-way traffic? I think that's, to my point, of starting with a premise that you want two-way traffic. That's my, that's my difference with you. And I, I can't do the math, looking at these little chicken scratches there, but what I'm wondering is, if that became a set of, a full, a full length of one-way traffic going northbound with a set of bike lanes in the middle, or wherever it ends up with the width of your bike lanes, similar to the 1200 block, but we'll talk about the width of the bike lanes also, then is there not footage there that you're comfortable with to also then allow parallel parking for sure on the east side of the street, and perhaps parallel parking on the west side of the street? Is there just not enough space there?
Mayor Protem Jordan, could I ask the fire marshal to come up and speak to your question?
Sure, if he's the appropriate guy.
Thank you. Yes, I think he does have an answer to that. Thank you.
So you see where I'm trying to go, Ryan? And what I'm really trying to do is take what the original configuration of the street was, but reduce it to one lane, keep the parallel parking on each side of the street, and find room for two bike lanes, a north and a south bike lane, bridging off the middle of the street next to the one lane north, similar to the 1200 block. And I, and I can't read here to start putting the wits together. And what I would, what I would envision, too, is we used to have a much skinnier bike lane north and south on State Street when it was open to cars than the configuration that now exists from the 1200 street down. So my math would, as a suggestion, would include in that block the skinnier version of those bike lanes that then blossoms out to the wider versions when you get further down.
Sure, sure. Mayor Protem Jordan, I think it's a couple different issues. One, to speak to Mr. Bailey's point, one of the major priorities was obviously the bike safety coming down the 1300 block or southbound. We have to remember, too, that the new dedicated painted bike lane on the 1200 block of State is only on the west side of the street, correct? So if we have two bike paths on the 1300 block, one of them's going to have to cross diagonally across the intersection. So let's funnel that whole bike traffic from Sola Street on the new bike path, coming down State Street on the west side of, and our option number one, making that an easy transition to go to that new dedicated bike area on 1200. number one, making that an easy transition to go to that new dedicated bike area on 1200. Keep some consistency in all that area and keep it safe. Okay, how are we going to do that with parking? How are we going to do it with a fire lane? That's kind of some of the basis of how that option one came about to be. Now, with Sola Street and the option and the realization that Victoria Street's going to be two-way traffic now, right, with some of that circulation issue that occurs to fire and police on Sola Street now with the dedicated bike area, and some of those areas that we can't make certain turns, we really need that circulation from Victoria now through the 1300 block of State Street, if that makes sense, right? Because now there's issues on Sola Street that we need to divert our response to on Victoria Street, excuse me. So that was part of the, part of the plan to get that two-way traffic. If we were going to open up Victoria, we really need to have that 1300 block of State Street continue with the circulation like Mr. Bailey was talking about.
As a number-one option.
Correct.
Right? I mean, there's planned for the best and planned for something that works almost as good, too, right?
Correct.
Okay. But what I'm talking about would obviously involve more looking at, right? I mean, can you dismiss, can you dismiss it out of hand, or is it something that could be looked at?
No, it could be looked at. And, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, it almost kind of mimics the 1200 block, your idea.
Except you gain space and you put some parking back on one or both of the sides.
Yeah, I can speak for myself and possibly the rest of staff that it's something to look at, definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Clark, so you're going around in circles on the RFP, and then we have no money. I know we talked about what at one time were microshuttles out there that paid for themselves. Are we anywhere with that? Is your RFP envisioning that? Are we still looking at it? Does the Freds of the world still exist out there or not?
Mayor Protem Jordan, yeah, that's certainly something that we're still looking at. I think that one of the criterias for the RFP, criteria for the RFP will be cost and cost to the city. And so a provider that can offer us the most service for the lowest cost is going to be, among other factors, prioritizing accessibility, of course, but that is going to be a preferred provider. So if there are, you know, cost share options, then that's something that would make those proposals more attractive.
Right. Or free. I mean, that's the F part of the Fred, is these do exist in places. Free ride every day. And the trade-off is something Mr. Grunbein would like, because that's the rap on the whole thing, is a Cuervo tequila or something. So we'd have to work on that part. But that, I'm specifically talking about that we're also pursuing, if those still exist out there. I don't know if they've been to the west coast. I know for sure they're on the east coast, up in, up in the northeast and down in Florida, but are we, are we pursuing those type of options also?
Yes, Councilmember Jordan. So again, that's something that we can take a look at. If you're talking about free to the city, there's always going to be a cost of providing that. So it's a matter of what offsets that cost, whether that is advertising, fairs, or possibly some partnerships. I know that in other places, for example, things like tourism boards sponsor these kinds of services. And so, you know, whether there might be a partnership that we could find in the community.
And then what is the difficulty with a Granada ramp like Mr. Marston described? What is slowing that process down from, is it us, or is it the theater not wanting to go build something that complies?
Mayor Protem Jordan, Brian Demore, City Engineer. Our staff has been in contact with Granada. They actually have a proposal that we've reviewed and appears to be something that will work. We don't have a date yet. I need to check in with them and just see where they're at on procurement. I don't know if they've priced it out, but it does appear that we can get a temporary ramp deployed there that will work, provide accessibility for that drop-off zone. And then in the meantime, I do want my staff to be working on a permanent solution so that we know the scope and cost of what that would entail to turn that into a permanent drop-off zone.
Okay, thanks so much. Those are all my questions. Anybody else have anything? Okay, so let's go to public comment, and I'll do the slips first. If you could maybe just five minutes till, we'll say you need to have raised your hand online. First speaker is Leslie Halos Lopez. And we're fine doing three minutes here, please. Evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me a chance to speak. I've been here a couple of times, and I just want to tell you that all the Carlitos family appreciates the support to downtown businesses. And I think, as I was sitting here today thinking about what my comments might be, given all of your input, I just thought about it and said, you know, what we're really talking about is what's good for Santa Barbara. And a lot today has been talked about, about safety, also the architectural aesthetics. And we certainly want to talk about the vibrancy that's so important for Santa Barbara businesses and just our, being a magnet for our locals and our tourists. And I want to thank you for your stewardship in providing those things. And there's been a lot said today that's resonated, some of my concerns, so I don't want to be so redundant. But I do want to just illuminate a few things. Again, the city has been so responsive to business initially during COVID, and for the past few years, it's been a real win-win situation for us, because we've been able to have our customers who love outdoor dining celebrate with their families and friends. And the city has benefited from the new rental fees and income that it provides to offset some of the costs for maintenance for State Street. And so, of course, we would like to continue our partnership with you and continue paying rent, but we are cognizant that, you know, the two bike lanes is going to be a plus. And whether you do one lane for traffic or two lanes, a big concern I have is that what's been called the floating parallel parking. And I just wonder if, why we need parking at all on our block, if we're going to more of a, you know, pedestrian, bikes, unless you're going to have enforcement. Currently, the parking on our block is all-day parking. It's not temporary tourist buyers. It's either employees of businesses or all-day parking, because there's no enforcement. So I don't know what value spending so much time determining where parking should go when we're trying to get away from parking. And it does visually seem to impact architecturally our beautiful Arlington Theater to have, really, it looks like the whole center is parking. And I agree with the accessibility, that it makes more sense to have, whether it's parallel parking or angled parking, to have that on the west side. And a lot has been made that it's safer for the two bike lanes not to have together with the two-way traffic for autos.
You'll see, you'll see that that clock there has gone to zero about 30 seconds ago, if you could finish up.
So I just want to say that the safety is, I think there's trade-offs. If you have one, it creates a problem in the other. And finally, I would just like to say, although we'd like to continue our parklet, if you deem that you just aesthetically don't want parklets, they're not safe, I would be okay with that. But I think just as a business owner looking at our street, that it's important to consider the other alternatives that you're considering, just to make it look better. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Richard Yates. And I want to thank you for giving some of your time to Leslie.
Apparently, I have done so. Well, good afternoon, Honorable Protem Jordan and councilmembers. Richard Yates, obviously from Opal Restaurant and Bar. Some of what I've said today has already been expressed and refuted and supported, so there's been a big mix of things. But I appreciate the council being receptive to what we have to say. I stand before you today on a road we've been on many times before, a long and winding road, which leads to the 1300 block of State Street and the fate of two parklets, Opal Restaurant and Bar in Carlitos. Most of us are understandably weary of the many, excuse me, twists and turns that have brought us here, but I'd urge today to make decisions not out of weariness, but from what you've always been able to do, a continued commitment to do what is fair, respects the will of our fellow citizens, and promotes both economic vitality and public safety. As you know, both parklets would be removed under the city's proposal before today, a configuration reopening our block to two-way auto traffic, which has been questioned, and I would also have questioned that. But if it's going to happen, it will happen. But in the name of increased safety, creating angled parking, and the thing that's always concerned me is backing into the newly reopened traffic lane, southbound lane. I don't know about you, but I have a hard time backing out of angled parking in a parking lot between larger vehicles, let alone backing into traffic at city street speed. So as some of you've expressed, the parallel parking our block used to have had its greater rear visibility. It feels much safer. Returning to this model creates the possibility of allowing for parklets fitting within the nine-foot space of a parallel parked car. And then, although this wasn't initially presented today, I was happy to see it shown, at least it shows some out-of-the-box ideas. If we were able to keep our parklet, that would require our parklet to be reduced to the nine-foot width of a parallel parked car, and we are perfectly willing to do that. In fact, we're happy to do that and comply with every other requirement the city deems necessary, including HLC, in the same collaborative spirit as we have all done all along, as the city's parklet guidelines themselves will indicate. Where, when you look on page five, you can see a picture of Opal's ramp used to indicate correct ADA design. So we've appreciated that collaborative response and work between us and city staff. These are areas of agreements between staff and State Street. And we really appreciate greatly and respect staff's work up to this point as well. And I think we, the other thing we've always been able to agree on is safety has been the predominant factor in making decisions with parklets and traffic. So it seems to us that if the Plan B, we might call it, is safer, it's a safer plan, which also allows for parklets balancing economic and vitality and safety for this part of the State Street's historic, arts district. That seems like the win-win we should be looking for. And honoring the will of the people and my timeframe, I would say that we would appreciate your considering at least an alternative plan locked along the lines of Plan B, that's something that allows for parklets to continue, but also make sure that everybody is safe and that we have really good aesthetics that the city, I know, wants to improve for that area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last in-house speaker will be Bob Stout.
Well, good evening, not good afternoon, Mayor Protem Jordan and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think first off, the design configuration that you either come up with or are considering tonight is really, really important. The 1300 block is the northern, I guess, gateway to downtown in what could be the future promenade, master plan, et cetera. I do think it's going to be a long time, my gut feeling is going to be a long time before the master plan significantly addresses the 1300 block. Could just be me saying that. Several of you are on that, on that committee. So I think it's really important and really worth your consideration, what you're looking at. I'd like to talk, you know me as the outdoor dining guy, and I get that. And I will mention that at the end, significant warning there. But safety is my concern with the plan that was up there. You're pretty familiar with the one that you presented with. A couple of things. I really think that this isolated designated bike lane, I think some bikers might really like that. And I understand what the city staff, trying to protect the bikers. It just seems like it's almost, it's kind of a neat design in a weird way to look at it. I was kind of impressed, but I just don't feel like it's safe significantly, primarily for two reasons. Number one, it's been mentioned, but backing out, I've got a small car, it's an SUV, but it's a compact, and I don't have a backup camera. I should get one. But backing out of an angled parking spot, I think like Richard said, even in a downtown parking garage is one thing. I don't see around, you know, until you get out there. So backing out into traffic, I think, is a problem with this. And I also feel like if you're walking on, you know, the Arlington side on the curb, you're going to have a two-lane, two-way bikeway. Again, pretty good for bike riders, I think, in some ways, but I don't know about a pedestrian just, you know, stepping off the curb into that. Probably, I know I've gone to Campbell Hall out in Ivy a few times and almost got nailed, and I am concerned about curb stops and cars pulling right in there if I'm on my bike. So I think that's really about it. I want to thank all of you for all of your time on this last few years. It's been really important to so many businesses, and on behalf of a lot of businesses that have really benefited by having outdoor dining, and not just the businesses, but I think people in Santa Barbara who've enjoyed it and who want to continue to enjoy it. I think the possibility of having parklets, revised, good-looking parklets, more simplified parklets in that block for at least these two restaurants, and down the road, maybe for other restaurants that come in there, is important. So I'm going to end before my time's out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gorman, we have one online speaker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, we have Karen Luckett. Karen Luckett, you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Good evening, council. I just had a couple comments. For Ms. Clark, is it possible that we maybe try a weekend with the cameras and maybe put some speed cameras? Because I think a lot of public concern is the speed and recklessness of the bicyclers. And then, then present that as a survey. Number two is, I'm wondering if the bike lanes really need to be that wide. I ride a horse, which is wider than a bike, and I only need two feet of space. And the other thing is to talk about calming devices for the bikes, or maybe paint speed limits on the bike lanes so that we can get them slower, because the real issue is, people are afraid to, you know, enter the bike lane because they are going so fast, and some of them are doing wheelies, which they really can't control. And also the increase in motorized vehicles, i.e., called e-bikes. The other thing is, we have to consider that the master plan is going to hopefully have a design where the public can use more of the street for art or for music, whatever, and our street might at some point be bumped out closer to the center divider. And, and also as a little side note, there's a lot of bicycles around the city that do not have lights on them, and it's hard for us older folks to see them. So I'm hoping that maybe we can, at one point, implement a city law about more safety with the bikes. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. That's it?
Mr. Mayor Protem, we do have one newly raised hand, but that was about 10 minutes after the deadline.
Let's, I'll make that concession, and let's allow it.
This is the phone number ending in 0588. Please go ahead. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Sorgman, and I am a member, newly aspired member of the Access Advisory Committee, and wanted to just make some comments. I did email a plan that I had marked up to both Derek Bailey and to Brian Demore, and this afternoon I sent it to Sarah. And I did have a conversation with Derek Bailey this morning about this plan and my concerns with how it's laid out. So the van stall, the way that it's placed, it would encroach into the southbound traffic and also encroach into the bike lane. You can't truncate accessible parking spaces the way it's shown on the plan. I also cited the code sections to which they could refer to, but I didn't familiar with that. Also, I sent them a copy of the city, the standards for the city of Santa Barbara's parking standards that developers are required to use for the backup distance. The backup distance for 45-degree parking is 13 feet, but we're only showing 11 feet. So I asked the question is, you know, if you have a vehicle and you're going to walk out from behind the car, I don't know that you have enough distance when you're backing out. And if you're getting out of your car and you want to go towards the Arlington side of the street, you're going to be crossing in the street, or are you expected to go in front of the vehicles or between the bike lanes? The other comment was that because the corner of the street exceeds the 2% maximum slope for parking stalls, we would be putting the van stall in a location that's not compliant with the slope requirements. So I did have a conversation, like I say, with Derek Bailey this afternoon and pointed out these conflicts, and just wanted to voice my concerns with this, not necessarily the design, but that we don't have enough width in the street to be able to accommodate all of the uses that are being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. So a close public comment, and it's back to council, and I just want to remind council that the purpose of today's update is to receive an update and discuss, evaluate, and direct pilot program activities. So I think that kind of frames it, so. Ms. Sneddon.
I actually think it's kind of fun to look down the line and see who wants to talk. It's old days. The overarching, I think, is something that Ms. Clark said about that these presentations having, allowing us a greater hand in directing pilot activities, and that's sort of why we decided to have these monthly updates, as cumbersome as they are. So I really appreciate these updates as an opportunity for us to weigh in. This is exactly what this is for. Before a major pilot is tried, before some new configuration, there is, there are all the people on the staff level, there's city administrator, there's safety, and then there's council. So I really appreciate that we also get to weigh in instead of seeing something that's already, you know, in the street. And so this is exactly, this is successful to me. This is exactly what this is for. I also really appreciate highlighting all the progress. I think we're so moving on to the next thing or looking whatever the conflict is that, I'll speak for myself, I forget about all the accomplishments along the way in this process, so I really appreciated that in the slides. So on this one, also the data, the bike lane utilization data, fantastic, so I love data. Our perceptions are very different from, my perception was very different from what that data showed. And then I do think we need information on the speeds. And, you know, over the course of time that we've looked at these issues, the speeds of these bikes increasing so much that now they're actually vehicles on the street really calls into question, in my mind, all of these bike lanes we think we're putting in, so including the one in the figure for the 1300 block. You know, if those are rad bikes on there going 35 miles an hour, then you suddenly have people parked in an area where it's, they're in an island with vehicles around them. But I will not pretend to be a traffic engineer, and I respect the traffic engineering that goes into these. So that I'll leave aside. I'm going to start talking about the 1200 block. I don't really want to move forward with a permanent drop-off at Granada. This has been mentioned a few times now, and I think it's like upwards of $35,000 or more, whatever would be a permanent. This is a pilot, and I think I really want to emphasize that, that when we try things out, the more permanent concrete goes in, the more curb stops or cutouts, then the more permanent it seems and maybe slips into being accepted as a pilot. But these truly are pilots, to see if they work. And so I can't tell you how disappointed I am that the Granada has not put ramps out. I know I said it at the last time, and this is not on staff, but I went to the Gracie Fisher event, and they had, I mean, it was very specifically for accessibility, and they had no ramp out there. And it was, I'm surprised and really disappointed with how much we prioritized, the whole reason we opened that street up to cars again was for ADA drop-off in front of the Granada. So I'm not getting the trade-off that I made for having cars on that street with what the situation is. And now added to that, those cars across the street, and so in the spirit of these being pilots, I don't think the Granada drop-off is a success. I think we could do it with, we could look at it, I'm not going to direct what I think right now, other than if there was the drop-off in that similar situation that you showed, you know, using the crosswalk and moving the crosswalk back, that drop-off would be just as close as the front door of the Granada. And I am so incredibly disappointed at the trade-off we made and that they can't even put a ramp out, even on an event that is welcoming to accessibility community. So I don't see that one as a success personally. So along those lines, I don't really want to continue that onto the 1300 block, because I think that configuration, when you have a major theater that needs drop-off, it invites that kind of misuse of the street by those vehicles that we saw. So on the 1300 block, I really continue to be very appreciative of the creative ideas. And I think it's, to me, it's never a failure to see a bunch of different ideas, even if they're unconventional or trying new things. I think that's fantastic. I also think, though, that making things more complicated than they need to be can add to safety challenges. And I think Councilmember Freedman, we might not agree on this one, I'm not sure, but we might have the experience of, right now I have a 15-and-a-half-year-old permitted driver that I'm driving around the city, or she's driving all around the city, and anything that isn't just standard is very, very confusing. And we are a tourist town, so we might get used to traffic patterns as residents here, but not only are we a tourist town, but the Arlington is like one of the majorist tourist attractions that you have people who, like, what way did this street go? And it's confusing in an unnecessary way, in my thinking to this. And so, and along the lines of the trade-offs is we're losing drop-off in front of the Arlington, don't have a blue curb, and I was just sitting here thinking about the Film Festival. Like, what does that do to that whole extravaganza in front of the Arlington if what is there is like curb stops? And it's basically, to my thinking, turning it into a parking lot, which disrupts the view of the Arlington, but it also disrupts the view down the corridor of the street. I mean, that's such a magnificent, whether you're driving, walking, riding your bike, that view down State Street all the way is, I don't know, I think it's an attraction. And to have it be a parking lot, which is what it looks like, except for it's not a parking lot that even has people behind you going slow while you're trying to pull out, it's like a through line of traffic. So for the aesthetics of it, for the confusion of it, I really appreciate the effort of it, but I just can't, and I realize we're not really voting on this, but in the spirit of these being pilots that we're kind of getting a chance to weigh in on, I just, it's not my preferred answer. So I think things that we could look at are things like going back to the pre-pandemic configuration that had bikes, it had bike lanes, it had drop-off in front of the Arlington. I think, as Mr. Bailey said, that it's, you know, we know what we're getting into with that, because it's the configuration that it's been, and it worked. And then if we wanted to add to that, that parklets could be considered under the new guidelines, then that would take into account the aesthetic concerns, the safety concerns, because that's built into the ordinance that we passed, that we made a program, and we said they have to be safe. So safety, aesthetics, and it would be more designed, built for the current situation and not the pandemic situation. So I think that would modernize it and then also just clear the street up and aesthetically. And Leslie, I'm sorry, I'm going to call you by your first name, but the balance between safety, architecture, and vibrancy, that really stuck with me, because we can bubble wrap everything, and it would be especially safe, but it might not be particularly vibrant. If we make things too vibrant and don't take care of the safety, then that's not good for anybody or healthy. And then, of course, we have the beautiful architecture at the Arlington, which seems important to consider. So I think, I kind of think if I was going to go for just simplicity, and it wouldn't be our call, it would be sort of asking city administrator and staff to consider a configuration that goes back to parallel parking and, or no parking, I would have to do a traffic study or something on that, but then allows for new parklets, if they were applied for under the new design guidelines and the new safety guidelines for parklets or outdoor dining facilities on a street in the shared right-of-way. And especially just thinking about the Film Festival, I just can't see how that configuration could work with that. And my last comment is that we really have to get those bike speeds under control everywhere, and it impacts how we can think about how we're using this space. And then also just, I think, of course, you're going to include accessibility in the RFP for the microtransit, but I'm, well, I don't need to say that, I'm sure that's going to be part of it. Thank you.
Don't everybody jump in at once here. Well, here we are again. I'll try to summarize my thoughts. Appreciate the discussion and the thought that went into this from the business partners, our staff. For me, I'm pretty much kind of on the other side, as probably expected from Councilmember Sneddon, and I definitely understand her perspective, and I think there's a lot of valid points in that. I just came to a different conclusion. When I've tonight heard from our police chief, fire chief, or city engineer, that what is proposed is safer, and for a lot of reasons, and that's an issue that we need to really consider on that, is public safety and circulation, and it's not just safety, it is circulation. When you factor in Solace Street and what has happened with Solace Street, if we don't have the two-way back the way it was, it creates a lot of challenges to get around, not just for our public safety and first responders, but for the public. It was mentioned, you know, in your comments, Councilmember Sneddon, about first-time drivers. It does get confusing when you have one-way streets, not one-ways, one-ways, or you're trying to get up and down, and then you factor in on Solace Street, when you go through, you're forced to make a right or a left, depending on which way you're coming. All those things go into it, and it's confusing, which is, the way downtown is configured now with all those, it's why most drivers take the driving test out in Galita. That's what my family did for a 16-year-old, because it's, if you take it in downtown, your chances of failing go up. So just to add more, one-way streets off a two is, it's just, I can't support that. The other thing I'd like to raise is economic vitality. Parklets do provide economic vitality, people want to go out, but there is also economic vitality that takes place before 5:00 p.m. with other businesses, and the main parklet on the 1300 block is not open during the day, and it creates dead space during the day. That impacts all the other businesses there, whereas this configuration would create more parking spaces that allows the public to go park right by the, by those businesses. But it also has a benefit for the 1200 block businesses as well, because if you can park in the 1300, you're going to have an easier access to get to the 1200. And I've heard, when I walked businesses, you know, months ago, that was some of the concerns, is they're just not getting the foot traffic, because the farther up you come from the five, six, it was down. And again, this is a lot during the day when we're the retail, so we need to think about daytime and nighttime. I'm also just, it's a bit frustrating, because I think this could have been resolved, but, you know, for the last couple of years, I've raised the issue of the historic, the aesthetic value of the Arlington, which I think we all take seriously, but that parklet, it doesn't, that's there now, and it's been there for four years. There was a push in previous meetings to not even consider this until we adopt the master plan, which would have put it there through the end of 2026, so into 2027, so it would have been there for seven years. That doesn't comply with the aesthetics that we want as well, in terms of historic apodo viejo. So that's something, it's just frustrating as well, because I think we need to look at it. What's there? What have we allowed to be there? What's in the future? And then, again, I'm probably going to, whatever the direction is, but I just think that at this time, we should look at how we can increase the vitality with the parking, with the configuration, and really consider what our staff has done. It's not like they've just gone out. I think the police chief's comments were compelling, and our engineers, too. It's just safer the way it's configured, and it does work in Pismo Beach. I've been up there a couple of times, I was up there a couple of weeks ago, and it seems to be working, and they have those spaces, and it's created more parking spaces in an area that's desirable there. So I'm hopeful that we will support the decision made by the city administrator, from what I'm hearing is that our current interim city administrator has also discussed this with our staff. So we have our staff that have gone with the authority that we gave them in Title 31 to create this design. So I think we should follow what the process we set out on this. But that's, if there's votes to change it, then, or give direction and come back, but that's up to you all. But I think our staff have made a compelling case for it, and I think the aesthetics will improve once we make that change. And the last thing, I'll just wrap up with, on the RFP for the microtransit, I'm going to mention the Granada in a second, too, but on the RFP for the Granada, or for the microtransit, I don't think we are ready for prime time to implement a microtransit program. I think, one, we need to wait until the master plan is adopted, so we understand exactly where the microtransit will be needed, because it could be the full eight blocks, but from what I'm hearing, it might not be. So you might not need the microtransit in full areas. There's also serious ADA accessibility issues that Mr. Marston raised. You know, in San Diego, he said they have one out of every four. We need to have four out of four. And I know Nick Kuntz, also on our Access Advisory Committee, has raised these issues as well. And unless there is something that's free, but there's nothing really ever free, because there is a cost to it, that we would be spending money that we haven't identified. And here's the problem I have with that, is if by some chance we find funding that we would implement towards that, there's 101 other priorities that I would want to consider before we go down to a microtransit that is going to serve very few people, especially if it's going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars range. It might be less, could be more. But for example, one thing that I would have considered, again, if we were to find money, is the item we just heard before us. If we had a chance to make an investment in microtransit, because we identified money, why couldn't we just say, you know what, since it's probably going to be general fund, that's usually where it would come from, why wouldn't we invest that into our water system so we could keep that that into our water system so we could keep that capital improvements up and then lower, and then try to reduce the rates of the water? Those are things that, if we go down the path with the microtransit and we don't have those discussions, I'm afraid we would lose out on other council priorities that could provide a far better, greater benefit to the entire public. And that's just one example that came to mind because it was on the agenda today. So, that's why I think for tonight, going forward with kind of the direction that we authorized, which is the city administrator to do this, work with our staff, and then in the terms of the Granada, I know there are challenges with it, but I also think that based on when we had the hearing and you had the full Granada, you had all the patrons that use it, we had the information that many of the patrons are not able to access it, and the only way to do that is what we did, which was open it up to allow the drop-offs. The logistical, and I just want to go off the hearing, the logistical challenges of only opening it during the shows was a huge staff burden on them and us, and that there wasn't any other viable options to have transit into other areas. Many of us did the tour, there's no way to do it in the back and come in the front, and everybody has a right to go into the front of the Granada. And access is not just for those in wheelchairs. Having the ability to, I am disappointed that there isn't a ramp. I think that's a very important, but mobility is not just challenges, is not just for those in wheelchairs. It's for those who cannot walk very far, who may not need a ramp, but to have that ability to get in there. So, there are those who have been served as well, because if you're senior or other challenges where you can walk or with a walker, you might not necessarily need a ramp. And we have benefited those individuals by doing this. So, I think it's a work in progress. We seem to have moving that forward. So, sorry, I went on longer than I wanted to, but I hope that we will support what our staff has put forward and just move on. And the last thing is I am very concerned about the, if we were to change it and have parklets until there is a full master plan, that we would have K-rail right in front of the Arlington. That's my greatest concern, is that we would get the K-rail in front of the Arlington, and I want to avoid that at all costs.
Mr. Harman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I very much appreciate all the work that has gone into this presentation that goes into bringing this to us every month or month in few weeks. And I'll just start by saying I associate myself with Councilmember Sneddon's comments. We're pretty much in lockstep on most of these issues. I first want to articulate, as she did, how successful this hearing has been. I totally agree, and I couldn't help but think that throughout the entire hearing, the fact that we're having this back and forth as uncomfortable is maybe not the right word, but it's definitely up for debate, you know? I mean, that's perfectly illustrative of why we're doing this, and I so appreciate the opportunity to weigh in, and it is the reason why we set these up every month. So, thank you all for your work and your willingness to have the conversation and hear us out. I am also not totally clear. I don't actually think I have any authority with regard to the subjects we're discussing today, other than to simply give my opinion. So, I will do just that, particularly on the 1300 block. I think it's a super creative, really thoughtful design that was put forward. I mean, it is a big change, and I appreciate what brought about that change, trying to make it safer, trying to increase some access. I mean, you know, it was done, I think, with good intent. For me, though, I look at it and I, just the complexity worries me. It does, and I sometimes think that simpler solutions are more elegant and can get us to a place of better balance, balancing all of those things that we're trying to keep in mind, obviously prioritizing safety, but vibrancy and aesthetics as well. And I think that there is a simpler solution, which, by the way, might save us a little money too, if you think about the costs associated with implementing this new plan. I really appreciated what Councilmember Sneddon described as a potential alternative, and also want to say, yes, absolutely, those parklets, if they are to come back, would be required, and I think that's well understood, but I want to articulate it as well, would certainly have to comply with the standards and requirements that we have already set out. I mean, I think at this point, that is, that's just key, and we're all on the same page about that. But I think that there's a simpler path forward. So, my strong preference is to move in the direction that was described by Councilmember Sneddon. I mean, I still like the parallel parking option. I guess it's sort of in-between what she described, what was presented. I guess the long and short of it is I think that there's maybe some more work that could be done here to get to a simpler result. It's kind of a funny backwards way of saying it, but I just, I don't see what was presented as being in the greatest service of that block, of the promenade, of the users in general. So, my preference is to see us go in that direction, understanding, again, of course, that my comments are just that, comments. So, I would thank you for your consideration of those alternatives, and also thank you for the opportunity to opine on what will happen there in the interim. I agree, and wanted to particularly highlight, as Councilmember Sneddon did, that speeds on the bike lanes are critical. I don't know how difficult it is for us to get data about how fast bikes are going, but I'm still hearing and seeing anecdotally that they're pretty darn fast. And I think one of the pilots that I'm certainly interested in considering moving forward is opportunities for us to mitigate vehicles that go at those higher speeds but are not technically cars. So, if we can get some data along those lines that would allow us to put together some type of, whether it's a prohibition or, you know, there are lots of options, but that's really what I'm getting at and thinking about the speeds, whether we're talking on a bike lane or off a bike lane. I think that's critical for me, and I think we've heard from others, that's sort of the next step where I'd like to see us go. And I think I'll just, I'll leave it there, but really very much appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity to weigh in.
Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I really value my colleagues' opinions, and I can totally see where their comments are coming from. And I don't know if it's late, but I'm gonna be a little cranky. After spending two meetings talking about the infrastructure of the city and, you know, rates going, water rates going up, and thinking this is just an interim, we have a State Street master plan that is being creative, and I understand the design of the decisions we make and how Santa Barbara has always proud itself when it comes to the big picture, the wholeness and keeping the uniqueness of the city. But for me, safety is always a priority. I actually spend a lot of time in that area, and I do agree that backing up, backing, yeah, is it? It's very dangerous for people that are in bikes. I've seen a couple accidents and a lot of almost accidents. I just feel that we are spending a lot of money just in this interim, and I know decisions have to be made, but I really support staff's decision. I know that, for me, I'm a visual person, and I would encourage staff that next time that you present a picture of the modifications. And I know for engineers and planners, that picture that you showed of the new proposal is clearly, one can look at it and be, and understand it, but if, for next presentations, if you can have more of like a real picture of that, of the street and, you know, the movement of the cars, it would be easier for the public, I think, and for myself, to visualize it. But because I've spent so much time on that area, I understand what you guys were talking about. I just, I think about the bigger picture. We have this State Street master plan that is going to be coming to council. When is that gonna happen? It's not gonna happen right now, but I just feel that for this, I really had, I'm just gonna stay with the fact that I'm supporting staff because of safety. So, that's where I stand.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I want to thank staff for putting all the effort and also the community members that spoke up about this. Yeah, safety is our number one priority, and I've been studying the situation we've been in since the start, and I can't help but notice that there've been, there've been a few accidents related to bicycling, but as far as I know, there've been no deaths. Can anybody fact-check me on that? There've been no fatalities?
Mayor Protam Jordan, Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, are you referring to on the State Street promenade?
Correct.
I will defer to our traffic engineer and public safety. I don't have statistics on that.
See, because I remember when, in 2018, after I'd just gotten elected, or right before I got elected, there'd been two unfortunate fatalities on either State Street or in the area, and they weren't caused by bicyclists. They were caused by cars. So, when people are constantly commenting about how dangerous and how scared they are, the bicyclists, there's this question that keeps coming up in my head that I'm probably not gonna phrase it very eloquently, but the question is, would I rather put myself in danger of being hit by a bicyclist or a car? And I know that's such a, you know, weird way of thinking about it, but I'd take the bike, you know, considering, as far as I know, there haven't been any fatalities caused by a collision of a bicyclist, knock on wood. But I know that there's quite a few caused by cars, and again, our number one priority is safety. So, if we reduce that, then I think we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So, I, considering the robust discussion that we've had and the great report that you all put together, I respectfully won't be able to support it because as of now, I think it's tolerable until there's a better option, if that makes sense.
I guess the opening comment would be, I'm really disappointed we're in this dynamic. For almost 15 years, I've sat up here in two different roles and begged and hoped and pleaded for staff to feel empowered enough to actually provide multiple options and multiple resolutions to the same problem, whether it's land use or today, a how to use, how to use a street. And what little I know of what took place, I think staff actually tried to get out there on the street and look for alternatives other than the December memo. And it just feels to me like we've not honored or allowed that effort to play out today publicly in here, and it's pretty frustrating. I think the box drawn around this direction from the prior city administrator in December was not framed correctly. It was fatal, and that it should have been simply to find a way to provide for public safety while protecting the integrity of outdoor, either parklets or outdoor business facilities on that street, and recognizing then that they all navigate towards something that's smaller than is what there is now, that is approved to the guideline, the codes that are guidelines or the guidelines that are codes for designs. And that should have been, that should have been the framing of the problem. And as you could tell from my questions, I'm totally confused why we ended up with two lanes of traffic. I have not walked, I have not been invited to walk that area to see how it integrates or doesn't integrate with Solas. I frankly just find that to be a startlingly no information, no presentation, just take me for what we're saying type of dismissal, and would want to see that for myself. And I don't mind saying that because I think, again, agreeing with a couple of the comments you've heard, that's exactly what we're doing here today. We repeatedly over the last three years, this council has said, we are interested in playing a direct role in what's happening on State Street. And every one of these situations like today, e-bike presence, lack of a shuttle, lack of parking enforcement, those are all deaths by a thousand cuts that erode the progress towards the future big-picture accomplishments. And it becomes very unmotivational and wears down on people to keep going on those big-picture hopes and dreams. So, I'm trying to keep score on where people are on this, but I believe today that we've seen one option, but I believe we also have the ability to direct the city administrator, to direct staff to come back with other options based on our comments. So, I would hope that the result of today would be to ask, tell, direct the city administrator to pause what we've seen so far and direct the city administrator to have staff come back with further options that meet, as I'm framing it anyhow, would be, would be my input, that we meet the public safety concern, but we also manage to find a way to keep the outdoor business facilities on that street. It is the, that and the 1200 block, but I think even more, more the 1300 block and West Victoria are the, are ground zero for the theatrical center of our community. And those are just implicitly tied into the benefit of being able to use the street, and that's, you've heard me talk about this before, I keep calling it the street, to use that outdoor area as something other than a street, and the importance that plays into the sense of community and downtown belonging and new use that is going to actually be there. So, that'd be where I'd hope we're going. I will...
Mayor Protam Jordan, for clarity, Title 31 grants the authority into the city administrator to make these changes, so council could request that the city administrator reconsider, but ultimately, when you adopted Title 31, you granted the authority to the city administrator.
So, that doesn't make sense to me because we direct the city administrator, and while she may have the power then under Title 31 to either have an opinion herself or himself and/or direct staff, what about Title 31 precludes us from directing the city administrator specifically as to what we want to see that the city administrator implements?
Mayor Protam Jordan, I think that's what I'm trying to get at. You can ask her to reconsider, or you can ask her to bring them back, but the ultimate authority is with the city administrator to make the decisions. I think, hearing the discussion today, that that staff is hearing what you're saying, but ultimately, the decision is hers.
So, why is not ultimately any decision a direction from council to the city administrator within the scope of Title 31? I mean, are we talking a chicken and egg thing here?
Mayor Protam Jordan, no, but the way the ordinance is drafted is she has the authority. I think council makes the recommendations based on what you're hearing from staff, but it is ultimately her responsibility and authority to make the changes.
So, Title 31, in fact, has then abdicated our authority to direct the city administrator to action that would be contrary to her authority in Title 31?
You cannot, the way the ordinance is written is you can't...
You cannot, the way the ordinance is written is, you cannot direct the city administrator to take an action. You can direct her to reconsider and bring back something for consideration, but ultimately...
All right, so pardon my abruptness, but the answer to my question would be yes, right? Okay, thank you. So any further discussion with council? Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, and thank you for that clarification. And I'm not going to question the legal interpretation at all, but I will say that in the spirit of Title 31, the idea that we had of granting that authority was so that city administrator could be more nimble in carrying things out during this pilot period of time. So while I understand where the authority lies and doesn't lie, I do hope that there is enough input here that something else could be considered, even if it was just reverting the street, back to a street with bike lanes and the drop-off in front of Arlington as it always was, with the option of applying for, with the newly updated safety and design guidelines, outdoor dining facilities, that would be just simple. But I think, I would hope that something could come back to us before it was fully implemented.
Councilmember Jordan, Mayor Protem Jordan, excuse me. I think that if the majority of council wanted to make a motion to request the city administrator consider alternative traffic configurations, additional alternative traffic configurations, that would be appropriate, and we could take that back and consider alternative traffic considerations. With safety as a priority, we would take into consideration all of your comments today. The one point I would like clarification on, though, however, is because under the ordinance, outdoor business facilities that are existing are grandfathered in, it is only if they have to be removed that they would have to meet the new guidelines, that I think Mr. Henske was very clear on that point. So I would like clarification that if the majority of the council makes that motion, that any new, that any outdoor business facilities, that alternative configurations that we would bring back would, if outdoor business facilities were considered, they would have to be new outdoor business facilities or not, you know? But under the ordinance, existing outdoor business facilities, would, those that would be grandfathered would not have to meet the new guidelines.
Mr. Friedman was up before you, so we'll go that direction.
Well, I'm not going to be supportive of the motion, but I support what you're saying is that we need to give clarification that if we went down an alternate path, that the parklets that are there would need to be taken down and computed guidance. That's fine, I'm supportive of that. I would just, just a point of clarification is, I, this is exactly why I think we went the way we did on Title 31, into giving the city administrator the authority to make decisions, because there are times when we're in agreement, and there's times when we have disagreements, or we change our minds, and it puts staff in an awkward situation. And so the way I am talking with staff and the way I've read 31 is that we could advise them to come back with the alternatives, but if, in our interim city administrator's position now, in consultation with our staff and the public safety and all that, they still come to that conclusion that, in the terms of public safety, circulation, or whatnot, whatever the reasoning is, that that option still exists, that even if there was four votes to go one way, there is still the option that the decision could be made the other way. Now, whether or not you would go against a majority, that's up to you. But that, just because we're giving direction today not to explore alternatives, doesn't mean that after consulting with staff and giving everything another look, that we could be right back in this staff recommendation. I just want to make sure, am I understanding that correctly?
That would be correct. We would consider multiple options.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Harmon.
Thank you. I just want to say that I would be supportive of that motion, and that is also my understanding of the law as we've drafted it. But I, I mean, I would find it very unusual to have a robust conversation about alternatives that have prioritized safety and the various things that we're considering, come to a conclusion, and see the opposite enacted. So, I mean, that would be very surprising to me. Of course, you know, it's certainly within the purview as we've articulated it, but thank you for that warning. I do support the motion, and I also, as to the clarification that was requested, I would say, if an alternative is presented that does not require removal of the parklets, or maybe the alternative is leaving it exactly as is, then that's one thing, but I would strongly support and be very happy with an alternative that removes them and requires compliance with the regulations. You know, I think, to me, it depends on what the alternatives are that are presented, the answer to that question. So I can't really say one way or the other, but if the question is, would I be supportive of an alternative that removes the parklets and requires compliance with the regulation, the answer to that is absolutely yes.
I'm prepared to make the motion to direct city administrator to propose alternative options, and with clarity that any parklets would be considered, or outdoor dining facilities would be considered as new, and would need to comply with the current design and safety standards.
Any discussion? Questions on the motion? Do you have what you need, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I can just read it into the record and then be corrected as necessary. Motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, to direct the city administrator to pose alternative options with clarity that any parklets would be considered for outdoor, that any parklets for outdoor dining...
Excuse me, any outdoor dining facilities.
That any outdoor dining...
And we might add on the 1,300 block of State.
Direct the city administrator to prepare alternative vehicular configurations.
On the 1,300 block of State.
On the 1,300 block. With clarity that any outdoor dining facilities would meet the new guidelines. With, with safety considerations?
Safety and design guidelines.
Safety and design guidelines, yes, thank you.
One further clarification, if I may. It's not compliance with the new guidelines, it's compliance with the guidelines for new facilities. We're not doing new guidelines.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good. If I can repeat that here. Motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, to direct the city administrator to prepare alternative vehicular configurations on the 1,300 block with clarity that any outdoor dining facilities would meet the safety and design guidelines for new facilities. Okay? And we'll do a roll call vote. Mayor Protem Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Aye.
Councilmember Friedman.
No.
And that is four to two no votes from Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez and Councilmember Friedman, absent mayor Russ.
Very good. We'll go to council and staff communications or council member engagements. Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Let's see here. Celebrated the Chinese New Year. Attended Sister Cities meeting for a variety of issues I've already covered. Attended the council retreat, that was good. Attended the Black is Beautiful event held by Healing Justice, that was a great event. Attended the ribbon cutting for the Dunamis House grand opening on West Gutierrez Street by the Turner Foundation. It's going to be housing for teens that have been suffering a lot of trauma to be able to transfer back to a normal, healthy life. So I appreciate them for doing that. It's going to house quite a few local teenagers. And I also want to say with a somber heart and my deepest respects that one of our residents, Dane Angus, who worked for Pure Joy Catering, was struck and killed by a drunk driver. And I want to thank the PD for being able to find them, because they ran from the scene. But I had the pleasure of meeting him a few times at a few events that he worked for, and he was just a really great, positive person, and he's really going to be missed in the community.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you. Just briefly, also attended the inaugural Black is Beautiful Gala, it was a very uplifting event, and also attended, with several hundred other people, Chris Potter's Celebration of Life, that was a really moving tribute.
Mr. Friedman.
Attended the Lega City's channel division, had their semi-annual quarterly dinner that rotated, and this time it was hosted by City of Buellton, and Assemblymember Greg Hart was the featured speaker and gave some insights on the state budgets that will probably, will impact us. The takeaway was, it's probably closer to $70 billion rather than $39 billion deficit that they're, that they're looking at, so just let's be prepared. And then I also want to say congratulations to a friend of mine, D.J. Jones, who published his first novel, he's been working on it for many years, and had a book signing at Chaucer's, and many members of the community there were in support of him, and it's called Sounds of the, or Colors of the Initial Noise. And it was just great to see a first-time author supported by one of our great local bookstores, and congratulations to D.J.
Okay, we will be adjourned then.